Someone?
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, put these down. Flag allegiance, the flag is right here. Over to the... Hey Linda, do you have any communications other than listen to our agenda today?
No.
All right, and for anyone who didn't catch on by what's in the drive, the second item that's on our communications list was actually something that was like handwritten and turned in, I think, to Lendier Office, Linda?
Yes.
So that's actually on the drive now so that we can see it. When I first saw it, I was like, I didn't get an email from them. So that's, yeah, we now have that information. And then the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes from the public workshop and executive session for October 9th, 2017, and the regular public and executive session meeting from October 16th, 2017. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about what was up on the drive?
In the minutes from the last meeting, we voted on the, I forget which one it was. I believe it was about the, I had it written down.
Do you have it? You have next week.
There was one section, there was one portion where I voted against one of the policies. And it shows that I voted in the affirmative for all. But I'll shoot you a quick email on that one.
Okay, so if there isn't anything else, we will move on to the student representative report. So we'll start with Irving. Irving, we'll be having a PTO meeting on Monday, November 20th at 5:45 PM.
We don't have a report from Bartle, but in the middle school, the scholastic book fair raised $868 in scholastic dollars. Middle school teachers are requesting magazines from Scholastica Scope, Action News and Science that will promote reading. These magazines are currently under order and will be available for the next school year.
And the battle of the books program is underway. The middle school teams will be competing in Manalapan in May, 2018. The students are required to read 14 different books chosen by the library.
And then moving on to our high school, we just had spirit week a couple of weeks ago. Students spent each day dressing up for the different themes and the hallway decorations were amazing this year. In the end, the seniors came in first, the freshmen came in second, the sophomores came in third, and the juniors came in fourth.
The boys soccer team claimed victory over Asbury Park in a 5-1 game in the tournament Friday in the freezing cold. They have won the group one sectional final for the first time in school history. We're all really excited both ways. And we are wishing them luck tomorrow as they advance to the group one state semifinals against Glassboro.
So just to clarify, I asked Monte Taylor about this the other day. I'm like, how many games are we away from a parade? Two games away from a parade. So two more wins and we did another parade.
Hey, one thing I want to point out too, we have a bus paid for by the boosters taking anybody who wants to go down there to the game. So the information is sent to, I suppose, all the high school families according to the...
I send it out, send it out to all the...
Getting onboard, okay.
Well, we have to get into our soccer game.
When is it? Tomorrow.
Don't let us up.
It's tomorrow. So you might not...
Yeah, where's that game?
Boosters.
The game is against Asbury, which is in Hattaway Field.
Hattaway Field, and when is it? Tomorrow.
Tomorrow at 6:00.
Six o'clock. Oh, it's 6 o'clock.
Yeah, but it's an hour and a half drive, so it's tricky for...
Hattaway Field, yeah.
Moving on, our AP chemistry class has just won the LANX Factor Nationwide Competition. The class had to produce a video explaining why they needed a new laboratory, and they were able to win $5,000. That's going, that's will be going toward renovating the Stephens Chemistry Laboratory, so that's awesome.
So Jacka just hosted his annual Halloween Walkathon for the Make-A-Wish Foundation, and the club raised over $2,000. So the students really enjoyed themselves on that Friday, and they did great work.
The environmental club and Mr. Lassiter would just like to announce that the cutting boards and candle holders from the oak trees are coming in, and Mr. Lassiter expects that the complete order will be ready by sometime after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I've seen some of the cutting boards, they're beautiful. So that's really exciting for people who've ordered. The HP Drama Club will be presenting their production of The Election from November 16th to November 18th. Make sure you check it out. Dates are available on hpdrama.org.
And finally, we'll have our traditional service day on November 22nd to focus on a number of service projects that will be sponsored by Student Run Clubs in the school.
And I don't know if Ms. Barker has announced this officially yet to the student body, but the keynote speaker, why is the class in the top of the conference? It's not Kim Harrington.
Right.
I judged. Eric Grant is going to be speaking with the students. Eric spoke with the faculty and the leadership last year, and really, he had a profound impact on us. So Eric is, most of you probably know, is a paralyzed Lakers football player who now goes around the world supporting research for spinal injuries. So he'll be speaking with the students at 11:30.
Okay, thank you both. So we will move on to the student.
This is a special night because we have a special student in our list. Hassan Franklin is a fifth grader. See, one of his teachers, his teacher, Mr. Blaski, is a staff body. Thank you for doing that, Carol.
Oh, my pleasure.
And Hassan's family is here, thank you. I'm going to step up to the podium and say a few amazing things about you, Hassan, and then we're going to take a photo, okay? We're here to honor you tonight. So I want to read some of the notes that Mr. Benjamin also read to everybody last month about you, Hassan. One of the things that Mr. Benjamin talked a lot about was how teachers and principals, superintendents, people who are on the Board of Education work really hard to help students like you, Hassan, grow and become really powerful contributors to their community, help them get back. What Mr. Benjamin was... Big word. I like the way Mr. Benjamin is using that word here, righteous. In other words, you do things for the good, for the good of other people. He presented this example several weeks ago. Hassan stumbled upon a wallet while he was walking to school. Others, with those bills. That's a lot of money. A lot of bills. I don't know what I would have done, but I'd like to think I would have done the same thing that I have to say you did. So when somebody said, hey, no one saw me pick up this wallet, and I could really use the money, Hassan said the opposite. You didn't think twice, Hassan. You immediately came to the main office and you gave Mrs. Grassi, the first secretary you see when you come into the office, the wallet, and he said, hey, I want you to give this to the rightful owner. Give this to the person who really owns it. You embody something that's really critical to the way Bartle staff are trying to shape the culture of the school. You do right by doing right by others. So you are among the incredible student body. I know there are some others like you, Hassan, although this is kind of rare, but there are some others like you out there, especially in Bartle. And tonight, we're here to celebrate you and your family because you know you couldn't have just left us alone. I'm sure that all the people behind you had something to do with it, as well as Mr. Blaski and Mr. Benjamin and some other people. So Hassan, why don't you come up here so I can give you a certificate? And then I would love for Hassan's family to join me for a picture. So come on up, Hassan. It's our picture. Man, you definitely did it fast.
Okay.
How's this, guys? So for family, you can head out. It's a school, I mean, so... Take care. And the second piece of my presentation has Elsie speaking about the China Exchange Program that I know I've talked to the curriculum committee about and the full board quite extensively. Elsie is here to talk more about what our vision is for sending some of our Island Park students to China if the board is approving. And of course, I'll answer any questions you have. I have a pointer for you.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming.
Good evening, Elsie.
Well, Elsie, of course, the gentleman, and I feel like a lifetime resident of Haddon Park, although I've only been here over 25 years, not quite 25 yet. But I'm excited about this program that I'm involved with. And through, for the past few years, there has been a lot of international students coming to our school, and we have created programs such as emergent programs, winter camps, and summer camps throughout the year, and mostly the students come from China. The company that I'm working with in China offered up an opportunity that I think would benefit our students here in Haddon Park as we make our corner, our diverse corner of the globe even more diverse by not only having Chinese students come to, into our school system, stay with our American family, learn in our culture, but gives us an opportunity to go to China, to visit China, to visit the school, to see what the Chinese school system is like, and also to share their culture. And I think would be a great opportunity for our students to be given that chance. With that said, I'm going to be showing your presentation about what is involved in going on the China trip, the expenses that would occur, the parts of China that you would be, if they were approved, they would be going into. And I'll stop by your presentation. We will talk about the mission, travel information, health and safety guidelines, the Chinese culture and etiquette, and students, the Chinese students and American students emerging together. The mission is for American students to visit China and to learn their culture and to create a very diverse cultural share. Our agency has been doing this for the past 12 years, and we're hoping that Haddon Park would be one of the teams that would be going in, especially as my hometown. So it would be wonderful that I would be able to extend this. And I'm going to go over some of the concerns that parents would naturally have, taking kids out of the country on such a long journey. The long journey is a 14-hour flight, so the flight leaves from Newark. So I normally would leave on, say, Friday afternoon and arrive in China on Saturday morning or Friday morning because we lose a day. The educators that would accompany on the trip, 15, anywhere from 10 to 15 students, selected students, would be able to go on the trip with three to four educators. Educators would stay in hotels, and while the students would stay in the dormitory with the Chinese students. The dormitories are fully equipped with internet, space, because most Chinese students do stay in a dormitory system. They don't go home like our kids do oftentimes. So that's why they would stay within the dormitory to create that cultural exchange belonging. We would go over, once, if this was to be approved, we would have packages, we would have orientations and sessions for both faculty and the students. We perform three orientation, package information where we would go over all the information. We would talk about such things as packing luggage, airport customs, currency exchange, eating and drinking, culture, and making sure that the kids have internet so they can stay in contact with their families. We would go over a list of things that I'm quite sure the parents would be very, very concerned with. One of them would be such as the valid US passport. Each student must have a valid passport, not going to be expired within the next six months. And I would provide information on where you can pick your passport up, passport pictures, passport ID cards, and I would strongly suggest that if you're getting a new passport to get the ID card, although it's additional $30, but it comes in quite handy. And we talk, we talk about, that's on the US side, but getting to China is required, you are required to have a Chinese visa. And we would be responsible for getting the visa for the students, connecting with their American passport, having the passport pictures that they would require because there would be two sets of pictures that would be needed. And providing that information and processing their visa through the Chinese embassy in New York and getting them ready to go on their trip. I briefly touched on hotel accommodations. The hotels are really beautiful in China, and they're usually between three and four stars hotel, and all the modern conveniences are there. You could always, and I know we always do when we go on these trips, request non-smoking rooms because unlike our country, seems like everybody smokes. So we always request non-smoking rooms. They don't have the same rules as we do, obviously, but one of the things that my last trip to China, they were strongly enforcing is no smoking on the airplane. That's one of the new rules that has gone back into effect, so we can rest lightly on that one. But the rooms are gorgeous, and it has all the amenities, and the breakfasts are quite elaborate, not as elaborate, they're very elaborate more than our breakfasts that we have here. They're very big breakfasts. We would talk about what to pack, what to carry, and fortunately for us, when we leave the US, they always say our luggage should be about 45 pounds. If you're traveling in China, say, for example, we would be traveling from Newark to Beijing, and then we would travel to Hunan, take another domestic flight to Hunan, the luggage requirement changes quite drastically because now you have to pay projected luggage because their sizes for luggage is like 20 pounds, and meanwhile, we're traveling with 45 pounds, and there would be a big difference. So we'll be able to go over that with the students and then they'll know what would be required. As I said, we'd go over packing, the clothes that they would need to wear. Customarily, all Chinese kids wear uniforms, so they're unlike our children, we wear whatever we want, they do not, they wear uniforms. So we'd talk about some T-shirts that we would buy that would say, have Island Park on it. We'd talk about linoys that they would have at all times, that they would have to wear so they're self-identified wherever they go. And special days where they, normally when they go to China, you would have someone from the Department of Education that comes in and lead the delegation, and they make you feel real special. You pull up to the school and there's lights flashing, welcome New Jersey students, and it's really exciting. The kids feel special, they put on a whole parade for the students, and it's really an awesome feeling because they feel very warm and very welcome, and the kids are excited and happy to have them in here, and to learn from them, and to talk about America, and to do all this here. And then we would go over more packing requirements of what I was saying before. So the packing requirement is really important about what you can and cannot take, and some of the things that we, that has to be a must-have on the trip. And then we would have information for the families as well. So just about everything in the orientation that we would provide the students with, a handbook that the students would have, the family, the American family would have the same handbook, the same emergency contacts, the contacts in China such as the school, the teachers, wherever the students are going to be staying, they would have all that important information ready to be available. All the students would be registered with United States State Department, and so that information, they would be registered, so the State Department would know where the kids are at all times. So safety is our number one concern, so we make sure that they're registered with the state, and they would know where they are at any given moment. So if a parent had a concern, we want to make sure that all their concerns are answered, and safety is really important for us and for the Chinese because they want to make sure that when our children come to visit them, they want to make sure that the kids go home with an excellent report, give them the best, so they really roll out the red carpet for the kids. Gifted is very important to the Chinese, they love to give gifts, and there are certain cultural gifts that are acceptable and certain that are not. Like, for example, we would not bring a clock because that's considered bad luck, we would not bring shoes because that's considered bad luck. So there are certain things that we go about, what kind of gift is appropriate from our school, such as stuff that says the owl, that would be very, very acceptable, and they would be very happy to have something that says Haddon Park or T-shirts or what have you, and candy chocolate is always really important. And then I just touched on the luggage restriction, and we will go over that again in the orientation session. International flights, we talk about leaving from Newark, and there's a flight from JFK, there's a flight from Newark. I always choose the flights from Newark because it's much more convenient to travel out of Newark to Beijing rather than driving to New York and then having an additional burden of going through New York City. So it's always much more convenient to come out of Newark. And I touched briefly on what the domestic flight would look like in China, and if you, the previous slide says 23, oops. Okay, I'm going to look it back.
Go back?
Yeah. Okay, so as you can see on this slide, it tells you how the size of your luggage changed and the weight of your luggage changed. So when you're coming in, and once you're in China, the luggage is not changed, so your carry-on is, you're going to be allowed only one piece of carry-on, and everything else is checked, but your carry-on is very small, just like a backpack, no bigger than a backpack. And it talks about going through customs. When you go to the airport, when you arrive in Beijing, the airport is very beautiful and it's very modernized, there's a lot of art, and it's really interesting and exciting, and it's all these different packages that welcome you. One of the things they tell you, do not take pictures in the airport. The first thing we do is take pictures, and then you see the sign afterwards. One of the things that they do not like us to do is to take pictures, but we'll go over about what's appropriate, when it's appropriate to take pictures, and the appropriate times to take pictures. And that would be that on that slide about the picture-taking and going through customs. What is appropriate when going through customs? There's no phone allowed, there's no talking allowed, you're supposed to be very quiet when they can see like a somber moment just going through customs, but that's a part of their cultural thing because they want everybody to be orderly. Funds and currency exchange. In China, they, you can get a currency exchange from any of our currency exchange machines here, and RMB, which is the currency there, it's normally one US dollar equals six RMB. So our US dollar currency is much, much stronger than the Chinese RMB, but that's the currency. You can use your credit card, however, I would encourage students to take some money with them when they're on on the trip so they have money just in case they need to purchase anything right away.
Elsie, I'll go and recommend, since I see you have quite a few more slides, that we breeze through sort of detailed details?
Okay.
And then we'll move on to the bigger issues.
All right. All right, so we will talk about the travel, the checks. One of the things that's most important is the medium and the culture. I would strongly suggest that when you, because there's a lot of vegetables, and we are very conscious about our dietary needs here in the US, so we always have students pack snacks and prefer items that they prefer to eat because, of course, there's a big dietary difference between us and them. So we always encourage just about everyone to prepare extra food so they can have when they're on their trip. Although there's plenty of food, but it's a lot of vegetables, and some items are pork items, so we always encourage the bringing additional food. And there's certain cultures about drinking tea and when to drink tea, but there'll be a tea ceremony, so everybody will understand that. And tipping in the room, there's not, no tipping is allowed, but you can leave something in your room. And then there's internet and phone access, and you can buy internet and phone plans so you can on-call home, and there's an app called WhatsApp that we would get, and the students would have that so they can communicate with their families here at no additional cost. And then there is a 12-hour difference in time, so once you get there, it's been 12 hours that we would have to contend with. So when I'm coming back, we would gain a day, but going, we would be in the same zone, pretty much. And then we talk about the emergency alerts and health guidelines. There is, you would have each child infected, if they had allergies, they would speak with your doctor, the parent would speak to the doctor before they take the trip, but there's no recommended shots that the students should have when they're going to China. There's no special health alert that they have to follow, and no special guidelines. It is required that all the students have international student insurance, that's one of the requirements of China, so they will have all their international student travel insured before they leave. Water, we only take water from the hotel, we do not drink water from any of the public fountains, we would only have bottled water from the hotels, that's the one that we use, that's really important that we follow that rule. Just want to go over some of the, there's a lot of different cultural differences, and some is interesting, such as Americans are always on time, Chinese about 15, 20 minutes late, and it's okay because they're not as time-oriented as we are. And we talk about saving face and difference in the Western style. This one is important because when I, my first trip to China, I was really annoyed because we all stand in a straight line, those are people in the blue area that are standing in that line waiting for a bus. On the other side, everybody crowds in, and they just try to get on the bus which way. So that was, that was something, that was a rude awakening for us because we stood in the line, we lost our space on the bus. But that was interesting. I want to move along, as I click through this, you will see the difference between the various culture, but what I really want to get to is, talk about the Western style form, and they slide, they go around. How would this trip be funded? And how, how would the students would be selected by the school? The funding of the trip would be done through the agency and the school that I work with in China, who wants to create this cultural mansion or building together, they want to create a sister-school relationship, and they want to have the American kids come in. And there is a great push afoot where they really want to get our kids to integrate with the Chinese students. So one of the things that they came up with, a part of funding comes from the Department of Education in China, and the department, and the part of funding comes through the school in China. And they are willing to pay to have our educators and students to come in and to be a part, share their culture. So the students would be responsible for the following, their American passport and the cost of their American, of their Chinese visa. The American passport roughly is about $140 if they get a passport card. So if they just get the passport, it's $110 US if they don't have a passport already. If they do have a passport, it cannot be expired within the next six months. So if they have it, that's great. The only other part they would have to get for another $110 would be the Chinese visa, and that would be the two major costs that the students would have to, the student families would have to pay to bring the kids to go to China. The only other cost is the international health insurance, and that's about $30 to $50, over the $50, because you can get the deluxe package or you can get the basic package. So it's about $30 to $50 at the most for a deluxe package. The students normally would leave on Friday afternoon, and then they would, they might The students normally would leave on Friday afternoon and then they would arrive in Beijing on Saturday because they want to enjoy the day in Beijing. So they would leave, I would say Friday afternoon, there's flight normally there's one at two-thirty um, leaving from Newark and they would arrive in Beijing twelve hours later. And um, they would leave Friday and they would come back on the following Saturday. So they would leave, they would leave on Saturday, but they would actually arrive back in the US on Saturday because it's a seven-day trip. Normally, the trip is over the s- the spring break holiday. And so the kids are not losing any time from being in school because they would have been out of school already. So that's when we normally choose the trips to go. There's twice a year that we do these trips. One is the winter break, which is the Christmas holiday season, and the other would be spring break. So the kids are not losing the classroom time. Both of those times, the Chinese kids, um, they really don't celebrate Christmas. So the kids are in school during that time. If you're going to celebrate Chinese New Year, which is in the end of January, beginning of February, so they're out of school then. So it would not impact their classroom time and our kids would be out of school. So it would be even worse, so to speak. Um, what else?
How many, how many, how many, how many students would you, would you, uh, would you want to take?
I would recommend no more than ten to fifteen students or possibly four, four teachers or faculty, I should say, or educators. Because um, anything more than that would become, it's a first time that our educators would be headed to, would be going to China. And I think it would be, it would be better managed if you have a smaller group rather than a larger group. Yes.
Where would you be going? Where in China?
Hunan. We'd be going to Hunan province.
H U N A N.
Yes, yes. Hunan province, yes.
Hunan, okay. And that's province and what city is it?
It's Hunan, it's province. And um, I want to say it's Ube province. But it the it's easier for me to tell you that they would be going to the Maple Leaf system, the Maple Leaf school. The Maple Leaf system is a model of schools that they have in Canada. That's why it's called Maple Leaf. So they would be going to a school where um, it's modeled after the the Canadian school system. And approximately anywhere from five to ten thousand students attend that school.
Is it, is the teaching in Chinese accent?
It's it's, yes, they have a, the Maple Leaf system, the reason why they have a Maple Leaf system is because they wanted to have an English-speaking department. So there is an English-speaking department with English-speaking faculty, but most of the school is Mandarin.
Thank you. Other questions? I think we're at that point, right? Elsie, where we can open up?
I was wondering, um, do the schools there have accommodations for special needs students as we have here?
No, they don't. No, they have, they're not at that point yet.
How have other school districts chosen, chosen the students uh, that that might go on a program like this?
They, they normally go by grades, participation, um, they they choose within themselves. They're looking students, how have they raised them? Reward system for some students who have really pulled themselves together and are doing really, you know, really good through the school year. It could be a child that had a problem earlier on in the year, they have seen improvement. So it's that reward system to get them to go on this trip. And then some school district, uh, some of them have implemented Mandarin in this, in their school districts. So the kids who are learning Mandarin, they will try to get the kids from the Mandarin.
And the kids would be, the students would be in classes in those schools?
They would go to classes with the Chinese kids on a daily basis.
You know, I I I don't want to change the topic, I'm really not. The, the Chinese uh, uh, school system has a big push right now, which I know about because my wife is meeting um, this coming Monday, a week from today, with a group of Chinese principals. We're going to be discussing with her and another faculty colleague at the college that she just retired from uh, about going to China and working with principals of schools there and teaching them some of the American systems. Uh, you know, all expenses paid, they're covering it.
Yes, yes.
And this is the second or third group that's approached them. So it's clear that they want to bring American ideals and inculcate that into their system.
It's a desperate need for the Chinese to do that because one of the things that they um, they, they're, the students have very long school days. It could be fourteen-hour days. And that's, and it's based on study, 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 study. And sometimes these kids go to school seven days a week. And um, there is no break and when you come to the US, they can't believe it. They're like, oh, this is nothing. And um, you know, because even for PE, it's like a couple of minutes of PE and that's it because they're back to studying. Because it's such a, it's with the population being so large, it's really competitive. And you have to do your utmost best to get into colleges. So what they're trying to look at is how, how do we do it? What are some of the models that they can implement from and learn from us? And how do we get our kids to, their kids to start doing a lot of critical thinking like our students do? And how they can expand on their colleges? So the more western thinking they have in place, the better it is for them.
Elsie, did you say that um, the, our students would be sitting in the classrooms with, with the Chinese students?
That is correct.
Right, and so are they going to be in the classroom for fourteen hours?
No, they would not. They would make concessions because they know that our kids would, I don't think you know, down. No, they would know that concessions would be made. They would be going to school for about six to seven hours per day.
Right.
They would, because we, it's not just school. They want to bring them on excursion trips. The kids would visit, say, the Great Wall of China, the Forbidden City, um, the Temple of Buddha. There's a lot of different places that they wanted the kids to have this whole cultural awareness to.
Right, so that whole period, they would not, how many days would they?
They would be in school for five days, but it could be up to five to six hours per day and they would be in the classrooms.
And again, the classes are taught in Chinese?
The classic, they could go to, there's some of the classes that are taught in Chinese and some of the classes that are taught in English. But in a week, they're not going to really learn Mandarin. They're going for this cultural experience that they're going to have. For example, last year when I had a group that went there in October, they were doing Halloween. And they really want to see how the Americans did Halloween. And so they went out of their way to do Halloween and they wanted us, they wanted us to say, okay, you're doing this right, you're doing this wrong. Wrong, help us to make us our Halloween the very best.
Are there other schools that you work with that would be in China at the same time that our kids would be there?
No, because it would be too taxing on me.
Too taxing on you?
Yes. So I try to only do one group at a time because I want to chaperone each group. So I try to do one group at a time.
I have a question about additional costs, but you might not hear, because we heard that they need immunizations.
No, they are not required to have an immunization, not at night.
So nothing more than they would have to attend American schools?
Exactly, right.
And I think, I feel like we talked about that.
I think we get more, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
We get, we do more immunization than they do there. So we would be, we would be good.
Okay. Um, grade ranges?
That would be decided by the school.
So the school they'd be attending is K-12 or?
Yes.
Okay, so.
K-12.
Do you have a recommendation? What, what do other schools in America that you work with?
I get a minister. Some, some, you know, some, I would get from ten to twelve.
The curriculum, curriculum committee?
Yes.
Has had some preliminary conversations about who could go and.
Right.
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but at that last meeting, we, we thought it would be best but we just let the seniors have shot at at least the upper grade students first and then we make our way down.
Yeah, we talked something about maybe we could lock with the seniors having a little bit more weight on that since our last opportunity to go. Um, but that would try to make it, I think we've talked about, you know, our interview, so we can make it as open and equal as possible. Although students that have special needs or really physical, you know, obstacles to deal with would not be able to, that was something that we never thought about.
Unfortunately, they don't have any facilities relating, um, those students are still institutionalized. So they don't have any capacity for students with disabilities.
So to be clear, if someone had a walking disability, a physical disability with the building?
There's no brand, there's no, there's no ADA, there's nothing like that.
So our students with physical disabilities?
And then we make the students aware that the food in Hunan is very spicy before they go. And we would also make sure the students know they should pack Cipro. So, so just in case, um, okay, um, uh, that, that's, I have no comments about that. I, I did have a question about the, if, if you don't mind, about the. You want to shift gears?
Yes.
Can I say one last thing about the next step? I think it should be for me to come back to the curriculum committee at our December meeting and pick up the conversation again, having you for, Elsie, the sound.
Yeah, I mean, my only concern is, I mean, my main concern is timing. You know, this wouldn't be possible for having discussions since December. Where there was supposed to be a delegation of staff going to scout out or something in December, but we're still having discussions since, in December. So this would be a program that we're looking at for eighteen, nineteen school years. Is that right?
I think the timing would be still work.
It would still work.
Because I think we were talking about January.
Yes.
Be when we have to have these students identified, the staff identified.
Oh, uh, well, I just had the pleasure of getting a passport from you. Um, and I know it takes longer than a month, you know, because we did everything we should have done. Maybe we snuck it under the wire, but it took us several months to get all of our paperwork in order. So timing is, is an issue, I think.
For your Chinese visa, it takes two weeks. For the US passport, if we have, normally what we do, we do an orientation session. And we do a passport, making sure that all the paperwork, because we send everything home to the families and ask them to complete it. Then we bring everybody back in and we do JISA and we make sure all the forms are completed and all the documents are together. And then someone will take them to Philadelphia and get them processed.
Ah, okay, conversant.
Yes, we try, we, you know, if we're out, we're close, we're a month away or something, that's what we would do to ensure that we have everything. Because we need a good six weeks out to have the documents because it takes two weeks to get the um, the embassy of China to get the stamp in, standard visa.
We're like looking for certificates and all kinds of fun stuff. There's a lot of paperwork.
Are there, are there a lot of options regarding uh, the trip itself? I mean, I guess I'm going back to your comment about a staff uh, kind of scouting trip. Is, is, do you, you have this all bundled together in advance so that there are not a lot of options? Or I'm not certain. What is the purpose of a scouting trip?
And the, the purpose that we were offering is that we had an opportunity for some educators to visit China in advance and just to come back and they would have a feel of what the lay of the land is like. That was that. You know, basically, I went to China, I saw the school system, I think this was interesting, I thought that was interesting. This is what I think from an educator standpoint, that our kids should be looking at, that kind of thing.
Is there a discussion on the Chinese internet, on the students' network?
There's, no, there is a uh, uh, app. It's called WeChat, like WhatsApp. It's Chinese, it's WeChat. And the WeChat, you can have all, you can do your banking, they do just about everything on there. They're not so big on the internet, but WeChat is the app that does everything in China. And everyone would, would, could be assigned one prior to go and then we would create a group. Everyone is assigned a WeChat address and have their parents sign in. The parents would have the same app on their phone. So twenty-four seven, you can make phone calls on it for free. You could send uh, spreadsheets, diagrams, whatever, send pictures that way. And then what we do, we created a WeChat group. And everybody who's on the trip would be plugged into that group so we can communicate at any time.
Yeah, I mean, with my courage in hand, that was, from what I understand, about free internet, maybe it's.
The internet is different than WeChat. But what we would be looking at is, we, what we would be working, the framework we would work in is the WeChat app. The internet is quite different because, for example, if your Gmail might not go through, but if you have a contact that would go through. Um, Google is not something that you would, you can use there.
Alright, so, nobody has any other suggestions?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, well, I want to just say that this sounds to me, I've been to China, I did business in the Far East. I've been to China and Japan and Korea many times. And this would be a great trip for high school students. So um, I, I would just encourage us if we can do it, especially no cost, uh, it would be, you know, it's no cost, personally no cost to the families. This would be a great, great opportunity. And as you said, the word so many times, really cultural uh, education, not a traditional education. No one's going to learn much in a class in a week, but let's see what other people in the world in different culture live, live, live that. So this just sounds terrific.
You would really work to broaden their horizons?
Yeah, it would. Um, I did, I did want to talk about the other program that we've done with you. I had a question. We, we haven't, um, we haven't had as many uh, Chinese exchange students come in, uh, I guess as we anticipated. Is there something we could do? If we'd been just unlucky, is there something the district could do? Or we could do differently to get, uh, to entice? Uh, I mean, this is such a great school district with so much going on, uh, to entice some of the students uh, from China to come into the district.
I think that's going to change. Uh, this year, uh, we have seen in April and up to June, we had seen a huge dip in international students coming to the US. But I, I'm hopeful as of last week, when the tone changed about the relationship with the US and China, that has totally changed now. And it seems like we have a love fest. So I think that will, because the parents would really be concerned that they didn't want to send their, their kids to a country that really didn't want them. And so we had seen a huge uptick in Chi- in uh, Canada and Australia. So a lot of kids went to Canada and Australia instead of choosing the US. So it, it had a huge impact on the educational system. Um, international students coming to the US, it's almost a forty-dollar billion dollar a year business. And so the, the schools were getting awfully concerned about what was going to happen with that. So we have seen that, um, last week we saw a change in the tone towards China. So I believe that, um, people are going to be much more optimistic and we will see a lot more students coming here.
Can I ask one of the, sort of slightly different set of questions, I guess? This is about, I guess, finances and insurance. Are you, is there an insurance that, that you would be taking on or providing for? I mean, if parents send their kids to China, do they take?
Who covers insurance?
Initial insurance on?
No, they, they would purchase the international student insurance. And that's between thirty and, and fifty dollars. So you can get a Cadillac package and that would be fifty dollars. Or you can get the nominal package and that would be um, thirty dollars at the most.
Right, and, and what happens if something were to go wrong?
They have pretty good hospitals.
Were to go wrong? No, no, I mean with the trip itself, what?
For example. If a child would get lost, that's, uh, we would have, not only our educators going on the trip, but from the English department in the school, they would, they would be monitored by those English-speaking professionals there as well. So uh, if a child got lost, that's why we have the group for WeChat. We have the lanyard that they would wear. When we go out on in the fields, so we're going on a trip, they would be wearing, they're having park t-shirts and they're easily identified. We have a flag that we use when we go out. We pop the flag up and everybody follows the flag around, just like they do in Europe. So you have the flag and we go through great lengths to make sure all the, um, our students are with us. And not only that, we stand out, we stand out a lot.
I guess the last question is, Marty, you're, you're not a volunteer or you're a company?
My organization, um, provides the services to the Chinese agencies and to the schools.
You provide the services to the Chinese agency and?
I have an organization.
So you have a contract with you that's a financial agreement of some sort? And do, do we as a school district get, get that, copy of that, or do we see that?
I'm sorry.
Would we see, would, so that we would know what the, or all of the finances are, you know, where, where dollars are flowing from whom to whom, all of that?
I, I think your question is that, um, what's the dollar run that comes into the school district?
I think I've heard your concern about the source.
Who is funding from the Chinese side? They're, well, they're paying for our children to, to come. And they're paying for their kids to come here. And they're also paying you, I guess, as well.
As a company, yes. As all companies, we receive compensation.
I, I guess what my question, exactly. So my question is, if we're doing this business with you, do we have financial documentation on your company?
Why would that be necessary to our curiosity?
Well, if your company is running this program, would we not want to be certain about the finances?
We're not putting money out into Elsie's business.
Right, I understand that.
Are you concerned about the sources on the Chinese side to make sure nobody's funding it, that the district might have a concern?
I have concerns about, you know, what the incentives are to make this program go.
What the incentives are, that the Chinese are really looking into expanding the opportunities for their citizenships, for their citizenships. And they're looking to, at the US, at Canada, and Australia, to educate their almost 2.5 billion people.
I mean, because you said, majority of the funding is coming from their Department of Education.
It's coming from the Department of Education.
From, no, from their Department of Education. It's a, it's a.
It's a, it's a joint commission too.
Right.
So that's the funding to run the trip as well as to pay you, I guess, so one thing. Is that correct?
Our agreement, we have an agreement with the agencies in China and with the educational department. And through that agreement, our conversations are made.
Let's, I be making too big a joke, this is a program to make China great again. But I did, I did want to say, interesting gift, I'm a little, again, a little off topic. When we went to the Far East, you get a nice little red box and you put a US silver dollar in it in red paper. And you give that to the person you're working with. And those silver dollars, for the eighteen hundred, hundred percent silver, they cost ten, twenty, thirty dollars at the most. And the people who get those really, really, really like that as a gift. And it's very easy to put in your luggage. And so, just a recommendation, if anyone here goes, that's a thing to do. They will remember you forever.
Give me one of those.
One of the, they pushed out, the kids want chocolate, they want American chocolate. And rochette chocolate, why? It's a huge hit.
That's not American, that old rochette chocolate, is it?
But they, they think it's American. But yeah, the gift is very important because they get very elaborate gifts. And that's a, that's a cultural thing.
I just happened to see last week with Kristen's trip over there, that his friend daughter had given some sort of presentation. She was reciting poetry and singing songs. So my oldest daughter said, wow, that's amazing. It's amazing that, you know, the Chinese people would think that's amazing. And it was kind of blowing up on WeChat. It was millions of views in minutes, so.
Yeah, they, they, anything that Americans share with them, they think it's so amazing. Because not often they have the opportunity to be in a room or to be next to an American to, you know, you go and you sing. Two years ago, at Christmas time, we went to this place and we sang Christmas carols and it was like, we were convinced out of Asia. It was like, wow.
Oh, she was singing in Chinese.
Oh.
Yeah, so this was a tip and extra effort, I guess, for the, the gesture was really profound.
Well, my son learned Mandarin here. And when we had the Chinese program at Irving School, my son learned Mandarin. And he's going to be teaching at that same school district, so, and he speaks Mandarin.
Any other other students?
Pretty good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Good night. Okay, so that is the end of the curriculum report. Brent, you don't have anything else for us this evening? So that brings us, we moved my report to the beginning so that we can finally bust our way through these board goals. So you'll notice that Scott, good night, Elsie, thank you.
Thank you.
You'll notice that Scott has the proposal that Anne had sent around after the last board meeting that I was not at. So hopefully, everybody has had the opportunity to take a look at that. And so, the way that Scott came up with this is looking at our board goals, which if anybody has our printed copy or, you know, has your electronic copy of the old goals, last year's goals, which are on the end of our agenda. Like, if you look at the goals that are on the agenda at the end, you know, we had things like, you know, research, high school start times, homework effectiveness, effectiveness in practices in other school districts. Things that we've done were removed. So the only things that were moved forward from last year's board goals to this year's board goals were things that Scott felt like, you know, we're not quite there yet. So if there's anything that's already been researched or we're well on our way to moving forward with, then those were removed. So, and of course, this is still, for anybody who's watching at home, this is based off of the strategic planning work that we did now, what, a year and a half ago, coming up on. Yeah, so, you know, solid year and a half ago. So, that was kind of, I think we were thinking of it as a three-year plan for the last part.
I was thinking that after this year, we would convene the community again and look at another two years. We would take a two-year plan.
So, you know, the good thing about doing that is it's taken a lot of the guesswork out of doing board goals. I mean, with the first year or two that I was on the board, every year it was just kind of like, you were kind of stabbing at the dark and stuff. Like, I don't know, how about we do this this year? Or, oh, okay, let's just keep our light ones from last year. Like, there wasn't, there wasn't a framework to do it. Now we have this very solid framework through the strategic plan. That was that document that was, you know, we put together with board input, administrative input, teacher input, community input, student input. So, you know, the good thing is we don't have to reinvent mobile every year. So on this first one, goal 1.1, did anybody have anything there that they felt was missing? Something that was there last year that isn't there this year, that they thought should be moved forward?
A quick question, just to make sure you're. Sorry.
One of the things.
Morning meeting is already happening, right? And, is that right? Is that happening just at Irving? What's morning meeting? Where is that going to be happening? And have we already implemented it, such that it should no longer be a goal, or?
Morning meeting is fully institutionalized at Irving. It's a bar, although we want to be sure that it's across the board happening in grades two, five classrooms. Which is why I thought it'd be good for us to roll it over.
Excellent, thank you. Anne, I mean, we can add, I mean, something that I was thinking of, and I think even you said earlier today, Rob, was related to the, I don't know, I don't know if we have this further down, but it was related to the work that we want to do around honors option and looking at what we did in the one social studies class for this year. Do we have?
Right, what exactly, Josie?
The honors option.
That was in two, I believe.
Is that in two? Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's later.
Okay. And I had to find the mark, in regard to that mark, I didn't add your comments yet to the document because I ran out of time. But I was not attempting to.
Yeah, yeah, I did a few comments about the honors.
Yes, so please, please be.
Okay, so we'll get there when we get to the one point two. Okay. All right, all right, great.
The other one that I, that I mentioned today was the kind of play-based learning. To promote that in the envelope of agents, pre-K and kindergarten, as opposed to more kind of academic oriented, uh, burning. So I don't know if that.
That didn't show up on this initial proposal for our board goals, but I will add it. It's still in part of our strategic plan. I didn't add it because it hasn't been as primary focus as these things, but there's no reason why I can't throw it in there, so.
So why don't we, can we come up with a statement there that we want to, that we want to add?
Yeah.
I mean, the thing is, if anybody who's on the document that Anne sent around, it's a live document, so we can, we can, I mean, we're here, we're a quorum, but we're in public session, so we can, we can edit this as we go.
So what I'm doing is going into the fourth focus area and I'm going to pull up.
Digital we are. We're so cool and digital.
Here's the goal that you're referring to. And I'm going to add it to the bottom of this list. So that's the goal.
I don't know that a play-based gives a map, though. Right?
Yeah, I think we're talking about like the creative curriculum in grades, pre-K and K.
That does not show a strategic plan.
Is that what the creative curriculum is about or not? I never really, I don't really know what the creative curriculum is, it's like two minutes up there.
It's one of the four core departments that are pre-K package programs, and we have to incorporate it into our pre-K classes.
So does that incorporate the play-based aspect that Rob Magziner was referring to, or?
Well, it's already been, it's already in place. I think what I'm hearing is, Mark, you're talking more about the, the need for.
It's the concern about pushing academic skills to, to low down.
Now, that's not spoken for specifically in our strategic plan, but there's nothing that says we can't throw it in there as a board goal. So, I'm thinking it should go.
I think it does naturally fit in that, that whole child.
Yeah. So maybe giving, maybe somebody could throw in some wording, some language. Since it's, since it's not in the strategic plan, we have to invent it. It's creative. I'm going to put a bullet there and somebody can pop on, throw some idea.
Something that age-appropriate learning at lower grades or age, and play-appropriate learning at the.
About meeting a.
I'm just winging it because.
Yeah, yeah.
Play-based learning.
Play and learning.
Well, that's what the play is, or the play. The idea is that there is nothing, there's no learning without playing at that age. I guess not play-based education is just educational, like there is, I, I'm like stumped here because.
More emphasis on play at the, at the primary level.
Not more emphasis, I wouldn't be like very specific because I think there's some.
Conclusion of play.
I wouldn't be able to measure, like, I wouldn't be able to say, you know, ensure that lessons, all lessons from K through three, or pre-K through three, create a play-based learning environment in which to gain understanding. Or, it's like all of my education is trying to fit into the little.
Watching Josie go.
Right? And I got stuck. But I want to, I want to be able to say that there's some measurable thing. And we need to ensure that that amount of time or that specific goal is met in each and every lesson.
I like what you're having up this far.
Go for it, Josie.
I can't.
Play-based learning.
Oh, that's good, Josie. For the, for the, not supersede age.
I meant appropriate.
Appropriate, play-based.
I think it's about learning, isn't it?
So play-based lessons, I would say, rather than play-based learning. I mean, because learning at that age is always play-based. It's also presented.
Pre-K through, pre-K through, through, three, uh, two through two.
I mean, through two would be a big change, wouldn't it?
Pre-K, K one, two, yes.
Wait, I want, I.
Oh, I can't spell.
I'm just wondering, do you want to have a, I think that's a great idea. It doesn't reflect our current practice in grades two, right, so.
Maybe K through, you can take. Pre-K.
If we're talking about the early years, like early childhood, it's pre-K through three.
Right, I would, I wouldn't be including three in the type of play that I'm thinking about.
Oh, no.
Did you guys see what I added? No?
Age-appropriate.
Yes.
Play-based learning. In a primary.
Yeah.
I would say in a primary.
In the primary, the primary grades. I would go even further. As usual, I would go even further. Because what you're saying there is the academic should supersede play-based learning. What I'm thinking is, we need to say that academic acquisition needs to be based in play, all of them. I know, I know. I won't be able to say it. Well, no, I, I, this is a.
This doesn't argue with what you're saying. These words do not give a fuck.
No, it's just. I'm just trying to be humble.
I kind of like the way this, because the way this is written.
And it should say in a primary school.
Yeah, in the primary grades.
In the primary grades.
K, can we say K through?
We have to.
I think, I don't have to talk about it. I mean, that's a big change. Are we ready for that conversation? I think change I like, but it's just doing the conversation, we've got to talk in two.
I mean, I'm not making that up.
All right, is that, can everybody live with that last one?
Yes.
I knew it, yeah, I was just being pushy.
That's okay.
Well, let's talk about it next year when, and, is it, yeah?
For the acquisition, for the acquisition. It's teamwork, teamwork. Teamwork makes dream work. Okay. Anybody have any other comments or suggestions for 1.1?
Going back to the research, implement updated homework protocols, aren't we done with that at this point?
Oh, no.
So, I conducted the research, but I haven't done much within yet. It's my hope to convene teachers now and have them open a proposal for what could be an updated policy, homework policy, and then share it with the board. Quick committee first.
Just hoping we can add that as a continue to research?
I, yeah, I want you to do that.
I have a suggestion.
Or continue, so you've done the research on the homework effectiveness, you need to.
Present a proposal.
So, I went through all of these by, like, specifics, I went through the.
Oh, so you have it too?
Yeah, that document that Anne put together, and it was like red, yellow, blue, what, like.
Yeah, Scott said it, I second that.
Yes, it was like color-coded as far as like things we had done and things we hadn't done at all and things we were kind of halfway there.
Everything you see here is either yellow or red.
Yeah, so, so I ignored all the white stuff there because it was, that was accomplished, is from what I understood.
All the blue stuff is accomplished.
Blue stuff was accomplished.
Yellow developing, red, dot star.
Okay, so, what I picked up on, and I put little stars on the things I thought were important, there were two things that I thought were related. And one had to do with homework, so it was A1.1.0 and A1.1.Q. And zero was about the homework issue that we just kind of reviewed. And Q is about parent workshops, which we haven't touched at all, I believe. Let me just double check it.
And that is still there for 1.1?
Okay, so Q was in red. So Q is implement parent workshops that provide child development support. This was really great for me because of what we just talked about.
And it's still there.
And it's still there.
Yeah.
I think it's really important for parents in this climate, with all of the things that they're seeing advertised. You know, Puma and all kinds of other things, and fourteen-hour work day, all that fantastic stuff is global. It's like a global push for more of that. I thought it was important to bring in the parents on this issue, so.
On homework issue?
On the homework issue and the play-based issue, understanding that play looks different at different ages. You know, there's play at middle school age, like, there should be play of some level. And so homework feeds into minimizing of that. So I thought that Q and O have a lot in common in it, maybe we should bring in parents to talk about this specific issue. So that homework and also, you know, extracurricular time outside of school, ways in which they can enhance their students' experience of school. And I know that parents have strong feelings about this, because my way, it could be a good way to rope people in to get their bodies into the parent workshops.
Well, parents did have an opportunity, you know, we did get a nice parent turnout to the two nights when we ran the homework focus room. That gave up the time commitment that their kids have.
Yeah.
So, are you seeing us do something more than that?
I was hoping that we could have a broader discussion about it, not just the committee or the group that was invited, but that we could make that like a townwide discussion. And even, you know, think about ways in which we could get parents and students involved. So, I think the students have a lot to say about homework, I'm guessing, at different levels. And, you know, if there's a community event that we do plan around this kind of thing, I think it's time to do that as far as homework discussion. You know.
How many people did you have at the, when you, I mean, it wasn't just a small committee or, right?
Well, it was an open invitation, anybody wanted to show up. It ended up being like, I don't know, ballpark, fifteen parents first night. Well, like three and four the second night. We did it a weeknight and a Sunday night.
I was hoping, the way I was thinking about it was not just like an open discussion, but more like a lecture series. So, having someone at perhaps a college level in education come in and give different talks that people would be able to take home information.
I always feel like the broader issue then to attract more people, something like that would be focus on whole child. This whole goal, right, couldn't we? How do we floor around everything here?
So, I mean, what I was thinking about, just maybe modifying that a little bit, if we could modify it to prevent our, because I mean, I think parent workshops has been kind of like, we've talked about it more in the early, trying to get parents in earlier to get buy-in, but we haven't talked about it kind of longitudinally throughout the grades, but it's certainly a lovable goal. I think it's just harder than it always sounds to, you know, to get parents out and involved.
To kind of add one of our board goals around the idea of like a community dinner or some sort of get-together that would be a lot easier for parents to get to. You know, it's hard to get babysitting if you have younger kids or to just find time. So if, if one of our board goals could be around like community organizing or something, I don't know if that's the right term, but to, to provide some kind of forum where a lecture series would be like the event, but there would also be babysitting provided by National Mother Society or, you know...
I just, I, I feel like if we're expending that kind of community capital, I don't know if that homework is the thing that we want to expand it on. Do you know what I mean? I mean, because we've got like huge...
Yeah, no, the idea wouldn't just be about homework. It would just be starting some sort of community-wide like gathering.
Well, and I think that's what we're trying to do, we've talked about doing around the detracking stuff. And I mean, and then I think all those pieces would come into play around that. Um, so, I mean, does that fit into what you're...
Yeah, I mean, it could. The idea was just to have some sort of board goal around gathering face-to-face rather than talking about the Chinese program.
Well, I think, I think that there's, I mean, that's kind of what I'm envisioning around the conversation around detracking and the, um, the anniversary of the desegregation. I mean, I, I think all of that needs to be pulled into a conversation about where we've been and where we're going.
So it does fit in the umbrella of whole child station. So maybe there's a way that we can talk about Q in terms of that, you know...
Or, I mean, or it could go, easily go under 1.2 also, the district voluntary inclusion and supportive students of all abilities, racist culture, you know, like that what we're trying to do is, you know, teach all of our kids together in a more inclusive form and bonding.
And I, no one in the district, you know, staff, board members would ever disagree. My concern is that there might be parents that might not understand what we're trying to do. So bringing community involvement into this particular, you know, conversation is important.
Well, but I think that's what, I mean, that's why hope will happen around that conversation. We've got like John's film, we've got, like, there's all these things that are gonna happen.
Yeah, I just want to hear that.
I just want to hear that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I don't know if 1.1 is the place to do it or 1.2, what if people...
I, I would think it would be around the entire, Scott's entire strategic plan.
It almost feels like it's the entire strategic plan and all the board goals together, like Scott was saying, if you, if you're trying to have too much focus on it, you're gonna lose some public interest, but if the, if the, if it was expanded out to have a lot of elements within the same program, then you would have some people coming for some aspects of it and some people coming for other aspects of it. And then that way you might have a larger turnout for a program that has, that's, you know, all these elements.
Yeah, I mean, I, I could, I could see having, having that be the basis of it and then actually beginning it in a more general way as opposed to the individuals, ultimately getting to those, to the individual goals, but starting as a discussion and starting as, as a larger, kind of more general thing. But I, definitely, I'm on board with it.
So it's the 30th anniversary, right?
Having a community conversation about where we're headed.
So, so it's the 30th anniversary. What about just making it a board goal to plan a lecture and discussion series surrounding the 30th anniversary of, um, the Highland Park, the Highland Park desegregation?
That would be fantastic.
You know, and then that could encompass...
Everything.
Everything.
Yeah.
So we just may add like a free-floating goal at the end. We don't, I think we don't necessarily have to put that under any, any particular goal, but lots of things will fit into that, you know? I mean, the conversation around John's film will fit into that, like, and maybe we can make that something that the Equity and Excellence Committee works on for this year is whatever events are gonna be planned as part of that, as part of that series.
Yeah, bringing in other community groups to advise.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, talking to the, you know, the commission, talking, you know, like, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, letting everyone know, this is one of our goals this year and, you know, how can the town, how can the...
Sounds good. Yeah, I can't wait to dive into all that. So, I, I'm sorry, I have a question about the desegregation. And it's just brief, so is the 30th year anniversary?
That's actually the 40th.
So, yes, but even if it's the 40th, that would mean that Highland Park segregated in 1977, right?
Yes.
But I've also talked with certain alumni who graduated in 76 and 77 and people who graduated earlier, and they say that the schools were integrated when they were there. So I'm just confused about the...
Not, not according to the state and federal governments.
So...
My wife was on the school board in 1977, believe it or not, because of you and her. And, uh, we got...
She was nine years old?
She was about nine years old. Uh, the federal government, uh, mine would come down through the state, decided Highland Park for segregated schools. And it doesn't really matter in a sense, because we were all surprised, it doesn't really matter what the appearance was to people, but the town had the, had the, had the neighborhood elementary schools. And those schools had different groups of people in them and they were definitely, if you look at the statistics, they were definitely segregated.
Well, I'm aware of the, the different, um, based on like the just like, you know, different neighborhoods. We have a Highland Park history book in my house, like on our copy table. But in terms of the, was the high school not cited? Like, that's what I'm, I guess what I'm just confused about and I trust the research that I'm just...
There was one high school, one high school.
That's what, that's not what was cited though. The elementary schools were cited.
So it was the lower grades that were segregated, even if the high school was essentially...
It was, I'm gonna say unfortunately de facto segregated. I mean, it's the same topic we're talking about with honors and honors option and AP. Um, there were definitely tracks in the high school and you'd see tracks that matched the kids from different elementary schools.
But I don't think it was cited, but I think the elementary schools were definitely cited as being segregated. Sadly. Which, I mean, that's, that was also why, as I recall, that, that's why we, and we were also losing students. So there was a sale of one school ultimately.
They all K through six.
They were all K through five or six.
And...
Lafayette, Hamilton, and Irving. And they were in different parts of town. One was in the south side, one was in the north side, and I can't believe, you know, remember all this? And Hamilton was where the central school is, that's the central school. Lafayette is now condos.
Second, second.
Oh, okay. And, and Irving is Irving. And the three populations were different. And it followed the kids, you know, they never saw each other until they got to middle school and, which was Bartle. Bartle was the middle school. And, and it followed the kids around.
Mark Krueger, Board Historic Board, Story.
And then I was on the board soon after again. And it was just after that, and we saw lots of changes, the schools being sold, uh, people, tremendous resistance. There was tremendous resistance to, um, certain parts of town of kids going to, that kids going to Irving, depending. Um, but it was, we would be segregating, we were segregated according to the authorities and had to desegregate it. It's pretty amazing.
If you guys are interested, I can email the series of articles about the topic, you might find it very interesting. I got it from the stores.
I appreciate that. I mean, I, I know a lot of these students.
And then Jerry Comperley just passed, Jerry Comperley was Board President, I'm a member of, uh, I'm a member.
That's Jim, that's Jim, Jim was the superintendent of schools. Um, and let's say...
I just think it's interesting that so many of the students who were in the schools didn't understand to some, to some extent, because of course the segregation was a lot of it was based on socioeconomic background, because that's tied to race. Um, and so I think it's, I just thought it was interesting talking with these, uh, the class of 77, whatever, two months ago, their perception of the school versus what it actually was institutional.
That's right. During the campaign, I heard people knew very deeply that it was, like, a lot of the people that I talked to were very aware that it was, it was like...
It'd be interesting to talk to a broad range of graduates, you know, for the year. And I've read there's different socioeconomic outcomes of time and...
And I was walking around like five people, like, that's who I was talking with. I wasn't like surveying the classroom.
Right.
Um, so like that, in that sense, I just, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I was just gonna hear your perspective.
Yeah.
We've heard that one means too, from audience members, that no one was integrated back then.
So we'll add a general board goal to that effect?
Yeah.
Say if anybody wanna help me take that step. Scott, do you wanna add a little, add me a bullet somewhere?
Well, let me, I'm trying to wrap my head around what we're, what the outcome is. Uh, are we trying to recognize current issues in our community by brokering discussions, posting forums?
Oh, as far as the lecture series, I do? Is that...
I think so, yeah.
Well, I mean, part of what I remember about our homework data collection was that there's a group of parents that think there's not enough homework. And then there's, there's a lot of the staff and, and board and such that think that, you know, we could do with quite less homework. So I feel like there's some disconnect and there, there's the need for maybe an open discussion or at least an explanation of what our goal is, so that the community doesn't feel that, you know, there's part of the community that doesn't feel that we are changing things by, you know, mandating.
Well, here's an idea. So, good point.
Do we, because we're still researching.
No, we've done research. You know, I mean, as far as academic research goes.
I took all the research out. I'm obviously gonna call all the data that I got and then present it to the teachers and we're gonna come up with a proposal. That proposal's gonna come to the curriculum committee and then the curriculum committee's gonna, Michelle, you're gonna present it to the full board. Perhaps the meeting at which the full board hears what that proposal is, is the opportunity for people to come out and speak about this topic.
Yeah, I mean, my hope is that we're more proactive in terms of making sure that everyone's voice is heard within the research, I guess. I mean, the research is the research. There's science and when there's not science.
Well, here's another thought, which, what I could do is add a layer to the process of moving along with our proposal to come up with. So between the time that the teachers and the curriculum committee come up with a proposal, perhaps I invite the community to come in, seven o'clock at night at some point, and listen to the proposal, so they have an opportunity to chime in. So that proposal might be, we have no homework weekends, or we limit the number of minutes students can be assigned homework.
Or the technical work.
Right, I'm not crazy about that idea, but, uh, where we decide, we're going to dive into the research on effective homework practices starting next year, so teachers have a better handle on what, what works and what doesn't. Do you want me to do, consider that?
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good compromise.
So are we comfortable with going in a direction that might be counter to what direction we want to go?
No.
How about, no, but how about this? How about if we ask each of the principals to do this in our buildings? I mean, we had this conversation over the weekend with Stephanie where she, you know, attended this conference where it was more about, you know, students had a voice, parents had a voice, teachers had a voice. It might be interesting to have one night throughout the district that's no homework night. And on that night, each of the buildings hosts some sort of event where they ask students and teachers and parents and everybody to come together and have an actual conversation. Like have the students come and present their thoughts, have the parents come and present their thoughts, have the teachers come and present their thoughts, and actually have a conversation in each building about that. And then you could have the principals report back to you or back to the board or however you want to do that.
Even before we come up with any proposals?
Yeah. Yeah, just to kind of get like, instead of, you know, give real life feedback from, from each building.
I like that idea.
Yeah, the teachers could incentivize attendance by telling their students that if, that they would get extra credit, they actually would get extra five points or something toward their grade.
Yeah.
But for the sake of codifying this, I tweaked the language in the second to last bullet, uh, in the first, under the first goal. So now we're taking action on results of research as opposed to continuing research. Forgive me, I pulled my reminders, my to-do list in front of the whole world, so I can add myself a reminder. Actually ironically, here's a reminder for me to record a message about homework for faculty, because there had been rampant rumors that Dr. Taylor was saying we can't assign homework anymore. Period. There were some. I'm trying to put the kibosh on rumors of it.
You can't do, well, you can't do it properly either way.
Dr. Taylor, going back to this too, um, one of the things I did hear was that you're not allowed to assign homework to a student that had anything to do with any sort of computer-based homework assignments, because not all students had access to computers to do the homework assignments. So one of the things, looking at this first, um, period where we're talking about supporting the curriculum and instruction supports the whole child, I'm just wondering if you want to change it to where we're saying curriculum, instruction and supports are in, in a way, because we're, we're looking at whether or not we have the ability to, um, have Wi-Fi for students who don't have Wi-Fi at home to do homework and whether or not they have the ability to, for some of the students to take a computer home for certain homework assignments, whether or not we can expand that out to have that sort of support structure where we're also, you know, we're providing curriculum instruction and support to the child, not just curriculum instruction.
So by hearing, we, what I'm actually hearing and realizing is that we don't talk about accessibility in our strategic plan, right?
Right.
If you're thinking this would be the place to talk.
Yeah, it could be where we would drop it.
I like that. Awesome.
Yes, I agree.
Don't put something in specifically about homework, ensuring that homework is accessible to all, either because it's on paper or because we provide access for it.
Not just homework, but...
No, I, I realize, that's gotta be one place we could add it.
It actually shows up in A1.3C.
Shows up.
You're such a nerd.
You have drilled down into the strategic plan today.
Into the mega, the red. It says provide...
What number are you on, sorry?
A1.3C.
A1.3C, got it.
Um, provide Jersey on services for those in financial need.
Let's get that on there.
Yeah, so that is in red, which is...
What number is that?
That is A1.3C.
That?
That's under gold 1.3. The district will ensure that community and school-based resources are provided to support families in need. So that's pretty specifically addressing what Rob was saying.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a start, but it's, doesn't capture, doesn't encapsulate everything, right?
No, no, I, I support what you're saying. I think that it's important to add accessibility, but I just wanted to point that out, that does exist there.
I like that more general, I mean, you have something specifically...
It's general about accessibility. Can we import that thought into our goals?
Yeah, this talks, gold 1...
I'm sorry, I lost my number, A1.3.
Oh, I have some... So some eight points, I know. This one is gold 1.3.
1.3, okay.
Yeah, and then inside that is A1.3C.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I tell me trouble like that.
No, no, it's very... No, no, it's very good.
By the time I do, I forget, A 1.3.
But this is, um, this is about school-based resources, so this is about, I guess, you know, tangible physical items that are available to students, but this doesn't talk about what Rob is saying.
Look at what Scott added, he added a bullet to the bottom.
I like to see ensure equal access, I think that's a great start. Um, we don't want to just sort of like give people a little bit more, I think we want to make sure that it's fair, you know? Like homework, we don't want to just give, you know, a little more resources. We don't have to add this about homework specifically, we want to make sure that everybody has equal access to what they're required to do for school.
Is the word here greater or equal, ability or equal access?
Insofar as it's possible.
Yeah, because it would be, for example, you could give people a problem to go home with, but there's no guarantee they can use the internet, because they don't have.
You could add the word all, I think, before the students.
All students. Now, isn't it, is it, don't you want equitable?
Yes, equitable is better.
Yeah, we can't give everyone.
Right. Right, right, you need to make it equitable, yeah.
So you're.
It turns, it turns equal into equitable.
Isn't this, isn't this just shorthand for the fact that they don't have computer access?
Yes.
They, we want to just say.
Right, but we, it seems that we keep saying it, is the thing. And instead it gets turned into, Dr. Taylor says we can't assign homework, and that's not what.
I understand.
That's not what this board or Dr. Taylor is saying. What the board of Dr. Taylor is saying is.
Yes, this is.
If you're going to assign it, you have, you sign it, you have to make sure that everyone in your class can do it, not just the kids who have computers and internet access.
But so just because we're changing it here doesn't mean that these more specific grounds within the goals of change, so those still exist.
And we could put comma, including, you know, assignment of homework, or something, shouldn't we do that?
Assignment of homework, or including.
That seems to be a real, like, you know, obstacle for us, so.
It's a dramatic.
Understandably, it's difficult for teachers to differentiate for technology access.
So do you want a, you want a homework tag added in there?
I would do that, yeah.
So people access to instructional, instructional resources and.
Including.
Including, uh.
Those necessary to complete homework, or something.
Yes, exactly, include to, uh, those, those necessary.
Resources should include those necessary to complete your homework.
Yeah.
Those resources necessary.
Including those resources necessary to complete homework.
Okay.
Oh, Lucy, I actually don't want to get off right here.
Take my DTE.
Oh, man, I was playing.
Good, and we don't need, we need their families to have access. Provide students equitable access.
Okay.
Scott, yes?
What?
How about we get rid of the words and their families guardians? It's the students who we care about as guardians. Provide students equitable access.
Just students.
Make sure mom and dad keep the homework.
Yeah, it does, but I think.
Well, no, Anne rightfully keeps talking about.
Here, Bob.
Uh, no, but getting emails out to parents in a way that they can access them, I think it's fairly good in there.
Okay, and get rid of the comma.
Provide students, sorry, I'm sorry.
Their families. I don't use guardians in the policy anymore.
Hey, I'm an English teacher, right?
There's some guardians out there.
Definitely definitely included.
A foster mom. I know, nobody uses.
Mr. Green, do you remember Strunk giveaway?
I do remember Strunk giveaway.
I think we all suffered.
Styles, yeah.
All right, people, next goal, G 1.2. Anybody have any, I'm sorry, what was that one? We're, we're on to the next one.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
The scout, I believe you added the first bullet.
I, I moved the first goal from the bottom to the top, that's all that is.
Oh, okay.
Just because I, I wanted to emphasize that we don't have a lot of goals surrounding inclusion of special needs students and I, I'm concerned that we, while not being an education professional, it does concern me that we have so many uh, self-contained classrooms, for example, at Irving, and regardless of whether that's, you know, necessary or not, it concerns me. And I want to make sure that we are moving forward with an effort to work towards inclusion. I mean, inclusion being a priority, even if it's not yet attainable in some situations. I mean, for me, having a separate ABA movement, a separate self-contained movement, a separate this and a separate that is the second best option at Irving.
Well, it sounded like Suzie was though, talking about students waiting in those classes and then.
Certainly.
They're, they're, they've been just waiting in certain classes with the rest of the, the student population and then the goal is to move them out.
Right, I just didn't, I don't want to carry a church of what Suzie said, of course she can say that, um, and I know they make a real effort, but, you know, some of those classes with greater resources and training and all kinds of support, some of those students can spend all day in the general, uh, in the general education environment, and I'd like to see us moving towards that, not just getting those students out of their, that one class and into the group classes, but moving towards, you know, radical inclusion, as some people refer to it. And I know we don't have the resources to do that.
Radical, a lot of people love that, when they feel really comfortable.
When they really need it.
I'm totally comfortable with that.
I'm sorry.
So, I, I was just gonna say that there were a couple of different goals inside this goal that mentioned cultural responsiveness. And while I have, you know, a lot of respect for, for the phrase, I don't know that that really encompasses everything we're trying to say when we say cultural responsiveness, so.
Do you mean in the strategic plan?
In the strategic plan, in terms of the goals, so like, there's, um, there's some, uh, I don't know what the word, like stigma is about talking about special needs and what it means to be, you know, to have Asperger's syndrome, for example. Like, what does that mean? That you could, a lot of people that have Asperger's syndrome actually do think of it like a different culture.
Right.
Like from a separate planet, like you're.
Wrong planet, okay.
Wrong planet, right, so I think that that is a part of cultural awareness and cultural responsiveness, and I would like us to kind of memorialize that.
I can tell you that the work we're doing, especially for middle school, pulls in special needs students when we talk about culture. So that's happening.
Yeah, no, and that's wonderful, I just want to be, I guess, a little bit more bold and specific about what we mean by culture, because you know, then, the idea of culture makes people think of like different costumes and different.
That's true, some are, I'm saying.
Diversity.
How else you could identify all the groups of people we want to help, you know, because for us, culture is, is like an all-encompassing term.
When we talk about this here, we talk about, what is this, the district will ensure the inclusion and support of students of all abilities, races, cultures, religions, belief systems, social organizations, gender identities, gender.
I remember we labored over that sentence.
Yes, I remember that.
Like nobody's business last year, like that sentence did not come easy.
I'd like to be.
If you're gonna mess with that sentence, I'm just telling you, you're only gonna get.
Squeeze in another thing in between the commas there, and say that we should talk about neurological diversity.
We have to then check with our students if the commas are in the right place, so you will be the comma, please.
They're gonna let us know.
I'm, I'm, I'm down with that.
What do you guys think about that, neurological diversity?
I love it. That's not surprising.
No, I mean, I, I know that's great that you love it.
I just don't, neurological, oh, ridiculous, I don't know, I'm just gonna remember the term, is, is more clear than cultural, like, I don't know, I just don't. To me, cultural awareness is more clear than neurological or subjective diversity.
I agree with you, I think that a lot of people with cultural awareness, cultural diversity, they don't think about neurological diversity. Neurological diversity, that's a term of art that's used in the disability, I was coming. Um, but, but also I think like in terms of like colloquial speech, but I, I, my intuition is that for most people, including me, until recently, whatever cultural awareness I, I thought about, different ethnicities, different countries, different nationalities, different religious traditions, it didn't really occur to me to think about, uh, the different disability communities, so I don't know.
So what's the, what's the phrase? Neurological diversity.
So, where are we, where are we, exactly.
So G 1.2, the district will ensure the inclusion and support of students of all abilities, races, cultures, religions, belief systems.
So anywhere in that.
But neurological diversity doesn't really, that doesn't go with neurological ability now, because.
No, it's not ability.
Right, right.
It's about, it's about having a different brain map from someone else.
Right, right, no, I don't know if I can fit that into that sentence.
What's the grammar?
Pick a spot, please.
What's the grammar?
But it doesn't, but it doesn't fit, is what I'm saying.
What's the grammar, is it all abilities, all neurological status, it's about neurological.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, like it doesn't.
That's what equal abilities, that's what equal abilities.
Yeah, that's the, no.
Because it's not, it's not about abilities. A person with Asperger's syndrome can do everything that a person with a neurotypical brain can do, just in a different way. So it's not about abilities or, you know, disabilities, it's about diversity, it's about neurological diversity, so how do we, how do we rephrase that?
But wait, I mean, honestly, where do you stop, Scott?
We never stop.
Yeah, we, we didn't stop with gender identity, why would we, well, I mean, we didn't stop with gender identity, we didn't stop with.
No, I have.
You know what I mean, like, no, I know, honestly, but we, you have to admit that there's almost nothing in the strategic plan about disability and. That, that's partly my fault, I mean, I didn't get there.
That all of the ability.
What I would say to you in response to that is, we probably have more students in the district who are not neurotypical than we have who are not, um, who are transgender or, you know, so. I don't think it's a question of where you stop, it's, uh, like, you know, how you, how do you, I mean, I know it can sound like the PC police, but, you know.
I don't need to mince words though, but of all abilities captures that for me without putting the word neurological or anything else there.
I think she said it doesn't capture it, for, for neurologically diverse people, it doesn't capture it, I mean, a lot of people with Asperger's think themselves as having a separate culture. Um, you know, there's a, there's a component of death culture that's, that's culture, so I, I see what you're saying, I mean, but in the, in the disability community, that this is a thing, it's a thing that not called abilities.
I know, but it's for, it's for us to see it that way, not for her, I mean, I, I would say, at least for myself, I see it that way. I see that when you say all abilities includes people with neurological differences. And we could say neurological differences, and I don't think everyone's happy with that.
Here, oh, can I, let me, let me say this, it's quarter after nine, and we could, we all could debate all of these things forever. We're gonna adopt these next week, we have abilities there, it may not be the best, but I, I don't know if we can spend 20 minutes now trying to figure out what the better words are. If you can come up with better words between now and next week, let us know, put them in, but let's not sit here for about 15 minutes, because we still have to get through our whole.
I would just say neurological differences.
Huh?
Neurological differences.
Support of students, neurological.
Doesn't really.
It doesn't, yeah, there's something missing, so it's duly noted, but let's, let's move.
Yeah, we'll figure it out further. Or to avoid a forum violation, you can just email Darcy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to work on the document cooperatively, right.
I just wanna, I just wanna know that the board goals are printed on every single one of our agenda, this is not just for us. This is for us to validate.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, I'm just explaining why this is not something that we can just brush off.
Well, in the end, we don't want anybody to feel left out of this statement, because it's a pretty long statement, so we should make it say that nobody should be, feel left out, really.
So if somebody thinks of some other, if they can word that between now and when we're done, throw it out, out there, but let's try to move through the rest. Does anyone have any, any other points about any of the, the rest of the bullets that are there?
Let's see, 1.2, what are we, 1.2?
Yes, so we have de-tracting the middle school.
I modified, um, the last one that got crossed out, that's the one that is just below this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's that one, um, I changed it to the following, I, and I'll just read it, we don't have to type it. Promote mixed ability classes at the high school, including possible replacement of honors classes with honors option classes, and enhancement of the openness of advanced placement classes. And I thought that captured the spirit of what the board wanted.
I'm sorry, where does that go?
In place of the whole, that whole researcher.
Can you add any comments?
Yeah, can you, can you log the document?
I'm on the document, I actually changed a few words to what I wrote.
Can you just put it in?
I'll put it in, yeah, I put it in a week ago, I'll do it now.
See it live.
I'm sorry, Mark told me about this a week ago and I totally ran out of time.
It's fine, I always have enough time.
And I'm sorry, but where is that going? I'm.
4.2, where it says researcher.
Of the research, okay.
It would be to continue, it wouldn't say continue to research or whatever, it would say just promote mixed ability classes at the high school.
Okay.
And so on.
So we're taking, you want to take it out from under research and?
Yes, I want to take it out for research, we already started the honors option.
Right.
So let's see, you know, we're gonna get the results of the honors option and, and we would promote mixed ability classes, including potential replacement of honors classes with honors option classes, since we, we, the research is being done now.
Okay, well, get in there.
So I'll, I'll, I'll change this to say exactly what I just said, so I did make a slight change.
Okay.
In fact, that means you could take the detract middle school classes, including math piece out, because I think, well, let's see where you come up with what a big deal would replace the other.
I mean, what is middle school, we're totally detracting, I mean.
Well, really, the only thing, it shouldn't, it seems like it shouldn't, I mean, is anything out of the math tracked at the middle school at this point?
We'd like to see a change.
Is anything else?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, what, English?
Math at the middle.
Just math, that's what, sorry.
Because we say including math, but it's, it really should just be detract middle school math, I mean, it's not including math, there's nothing else that's tracked in the middle school.
That's true, yes.
Correct, yep. Detract middle school math?
Must I get it?
I don't think it's worse than having to type when like you feel like the whole world's watching you. All of a sudden your fingers started to like legs off.
He's decent typing.
I'm just gonna let see the marks.
I'm changing it now. It's on the right. I'm on the right in the comments.
Oh, that's why, you can do it live in the document.
I didn't want to do it live in the document.
Why? Come on.
Okay, I mean.
We can always pull up the, the prior versions.
No, I'll, I'll cut the paste.
It's not legit, it's.
If you don't want to, just commit.
I'll cut the paste, I don't know anyone who's waiting.
Oh, no, we're not, um, so, any 2.2, thoughts, concerns, suggestions?
You know what I realized, I did, I made notes on the strategic plan.
Oh, really?
Not on the board goals, because I was afraid to touch the document, so.
Okay. Well, mixed ability, possible placement, honors classes, advanced option classes, enhancement of open, of open access. More open access.
Oh, yeah, not.
Not enhancement of advanced placement, right, enhancement of increased openness?
And more, and more, and more, open access to advanced placement classes. Well, mixed ability, including possible placement. See, no, mixed ability, possible placement, honors, plus the honors option places, and more open access to advanced placement classes.
And then we're deleting the next sentence, right?
Right, advanced placement classes.
So, I think I'd like to go back a little bit to G 1.2. Where it says provide professional development to help school personnel identify, understand, and effectively respond to cultural diversity. I think that's where personally I feel like we're lacking a little bit of the sensitivity to special needs in the district.
And.
Neurological?
And neurological.
I mean, and other abilities, but I mean, that's just neurological, it's also like people with other disabilities.
Oh, yeah.
Cultural, respond to cultural, neurological, and ability diversity.
And socioeconomic diversity.
Wouldn't it be easier at this point just to say, just if you were to, inclusion and support of all students and not try to.
No, no, and I'll tell you why, because that population is completely dismissive and frugal. When you say diversity, because we, like I said, say the word diversity, not everyone has the same understanding of what that word encompasses. And I know that that is the case in our district, that we don't always think of people with different, um, neurological.
Right, but I'm saying, rather than trying to define all the different diverse populations within the school district, wouldn't it be easier for us to say the district will ensure the inclusion and support of all students?
I wish I, I wish I could have confidence that when we say all students, that everyone understands the, the meaning, all students in.
We used, we used to say all students, I, I think that, I mean, back in the day, I think that, I think we've added some of these to, uh, point to people who are maybe, who, who have differences.
Or not moving to dress.
And, and, yeah, and, and identify them.
Yeah, I think it's fine to just amount, I mean, each year we can add more.
Yeah, I mean.
Do you want to add gender there?
I think it's educational, right, rather than, it's telling people what we mean by all students.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, I, I'm saying I would love for that to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, I think that we all understand what we say diversity, because we're all kind of knee-deep in educational policy and understanding what the district is lacking.
No, the district has said all students for decades.
Yes, yeah.
Do we want to add gender into that statement there, or?
Isn't there that has to be?
Is it?
Gender.
Gender slash gender identities?
In that one that you were just working on?
Not in that particular.
Oh, oh, that one, oh, no.
No, we're talking specifically about PT.
Right.
So.
We can offer more PT here.
I mean, I, I'm absolutely not denying us more PT in terms of gender identity, but I think that there are certain places, like Anne points out, that our strategic plan is kind of falling, falling down a bit, and that's in supporting students with special needs, I would say. I, I think that we've made like great strides in supporting students in gender diversity and other, um, like sexual identity. There's lots of issues that we have been very cognizant of making, you know, progress, I think that in terms of special needs students, maybe we have gotten a little sloppy about specifying that group as a, as a group that still needs to be addressed.
Okay, so does that, does the statement that there, that's there covered, you know?
I think so.
Okay, so let's go to 2.2. Okay, so let's go to two point two. Hi. I think some more about how should I do these all day? All right, two point two people, focus, we still have a whole agenda to get through.
I'm sure we're all, I'm sure we're all.
So do you have any questions on two point two?
I think it might be with two point two, it might be with the one about it, I'm not sure where, because I know at one point we looked at the board goal across the board, all the different assessments that were done throughout the district. And I know we were looking at trying to figure out whether or not top heavy in some areas, and not enough in other areas. And I'm just wondering where that is at and where it should be. And I just wanna make sure that we're, we're still assessing our students at that level, but not what we do.
Actually, I think that's, actually a matter of state law now, isn't it, that districts have to let parents know what standardized assessments?
I'm not aware of that. I, well, I mean, we have to send home an S O letter that indicates what standardized assessments we need in the district, but not other outside of that, that's it. I, I was thinking that the last bullet for G two two speaks to that, though. Well, but if you'd like it to be more specific, we can hold it on, I'd say agree with you that we need to do it all, it's still poised to do that, we haven't got to that yet.
It, it was just the way it's worded, I, I didn't come up with a way of rewording it, but it just felt like we needed a way to review our own assessments, program with the students themselves, just to make sure that we're, we were putting it in a way that was sensible for the students overall, and not, and not for our own.
Let me change the language.
I'm recording.
Sure.
I'm feeling quite all of a sudden, just.
I'm trying to, why, do I watch live video?
Yeah, I'm watching on the screen.
But I would.
Probably it's quite a time right now on my inability to prepare this section on the board's.
And, and I've got something in there about that it doesn't, that students do, don't remember most of the work. To retracting, not detracting.
Yeah.
Something to play with.
Yeah.
Better add an I and G to the unexpected track.
My computer just knows it to be that.
I'll do it.
Okay, can everybody look at those last three?
Do we need to be specific about turnkeying and that provide professional development that is ongoing in, in practice for teachers? Should we kind of be specific about how we deliver that?
I mean, we just talked about it the other night, when I said in our frequent committee meeting, like, when I thought back to what PD looked like in this district three years ago compared to what it looks like now, it's, I mean, it's a totally different animal. It's a totally different animal, I don't feel the need to institute that in board goals.
Yeah, I was just wondering if Scott was thinking about it, because I felt that it's part of the strategic plans to make sure that we have kind of, you know, sets for example.
Right, and it seems like that's what's, that's what's happening. Okay, can we move on from board goals? So, or if anybody has any last tweaks to these, let it be done this next week, and we're gonna put on them next week, and we all, we'll do the same thing, move it to the top again, so if there's any discussion, we can get through it, but.
Do I have the green light to clean this document?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I think whatever, yeah, whatever edits needs to be made on there, we'll make it for our next meeting. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Bush.
Um, goal one point one, I just wanted to read this a little bit quickly, because I thought it was something that we may have missed. When we were down in Atlantic City, we heard the state board had talked a lot about civic education, which sent a chill up and down my spine.
That does come up in our third focus here, which I didn't include in these goals.
Right, and I would like for us to get a jump on that before the state board event gets their tentacles on it.
I've gotta be frank, that, the reason why I didn't add that goal here is because we, the reality is, we've, we've been so all in with these particular goals, I think that would take us in another, spin us off in a different direction, and distract our teachers from the focus, which right now is on whole child cultural responsibility.
Yeah, I'm not so worried about that.
Okay.
I'm not so worried about what's gonna come down from the board right now, so it's totally, we have no idea what's gonna happen.
That's true.
It's, everything is being scattered to a wind right now, so.
Well, it's good to see that.
I'm not worried about beating the state board in front of anything.
I see Mark Beach on the transition team.
Yep.
The transition team.
He's on the transition team. Yes, he is. Mark Beach, our former president of the state board.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, so let us move on from the board goals. This is why we did not get through them, we got to them at ten o'clock at night, or nine thirty at night, and I, we all, the flames over, because we all like to talk. Okay, so the last thing I have under my president's report is just a quick update on our charter appeal. So this is the first of our two appeals of Latika's expansion, was finally heard in court in Newark last week, and I went with our attorney, John Bush, and Doug Silvestro met us there as well, and David Rubin was the one who presented the argument for us before the appellate division, so it was the appellate division of Superior Court in Newark. Some of the interesting bits about it, you know, things I learned about the way appellate, the appellate division works that I didn't know. He was like, just certain facts about how the case was heard, you know, indicated certain things to him, the fact that we had three judges and not two, the fact that we were heard in the morning and not later of the day, where they apparently stick to things that they don't really care about so much. You know, so just the fact that we had more judges, the fact that it was first thing in the morning, kind of signified to him that this was something that was, you know, kind of on their radar, or something that, you know, merited some attention. The arguments themselves were very, were very interesting. They seemed to be wanting to kind of, they asked a lot of questions about why they should even hear this now. And the one that I thought was the most fascinating was, well, they've been paying all this time, so why are they raising this argument now? So I thought that was kind of fascinating, I mean, I think if we lose this, it's going to be on some grounds like that. Not on the merits of the argument that we've made, but on the, if they're saying that districts who aren't part of the district of residents shouldn't have to pay, then why have they been paying since two thousand and ten?
How sneaky, devil's.
But the, that presents other interesting opportunities moving forward, and David Rubin, who again is our special counsel before the appellate division on this case, and our second appeal, he's also now representing Scadaway on, I think, one additional case that's going before the appellate division. He's representing New Brunswick, and North Brunswick, and their case that's going before the appellate division, so this is kind of turned into his thing. So as he said, he's gonna be getting lots of different bites in this apple, so if ours is the one that pushes this issue to the fore, one of these other ones likely will.
So how did you answer that question?
Um, I mean, there is, there really isn't an answer, I mean, like, what, what answer can you possibly give for that? I mean.
There's always an answer, because, I mean, he's a smart guy, he's fantastic.
I can see if there was one that he put in the submission, I mean, there, there's no answer to that, I mean, we've been paying, they say, he would say, yes, well, he did raise this objection, you know, here and here, but, you know, no, they have not, they did not, not pay, I mean, these are appellate judges, they're not gonna take some song and dance.
And I assume, I'm sorry, I'm not, I mean, I assume that he would have responded slightly to the fact that, you know, there is no legal requirement that you press your rights immediately. I mean, you're supposed to press them within a reasonable time, but, you know, maybe six years is reasonable for a law, for bureaucracy, it's school wars, elections, you know, for this institution to get back together to do that. Um, you know, it's not gonna be unduly prejudicial to these charter schools, you know, they should have known that this was an issue, because we've been talking about, I don't know, that's what I was saying.
The fascinating thing that's coming out of this, the important, the important piece that's coming out of it, is that it's forcing both the state and the charter school, and the Jersey Charter Schools Association to make the argument of, yeah, we need that every charter school is a statewide charter school. That's their argument. Their argument is, yes, if there's a charter school all the way north in Essex County, then yes, they could potentially take a kid from Katniss County, and that district in Katniss County would be responsible for paying for that student. That may get them out of this case in court, but that's a really, really, really bad argument in the court of public opinion. A really bad argument, and it's a really bad argument to make, coming in with a new governor, and, and, you know, I mean, the goal is, you know, that we're gonna push the legislature to actually act and to do something different in terms of how either charter schools are funded, or something. This is gonna, whether we win or lose this case, I think we all walked out of the courtroom feeling like, this case is absolutely going to push that conversation to the forefront, because nobody can, nobody can wrap their brains around that. Maybe the Jersey Charter Schools Association can wrap their brains around the fact that, yeah, a, a char, a district in Katniss should pay for a charter school in North Jersey, but it, it kind of defies logic, so.
If we hadn't paid six years ago, would either, would, would either of our administrators know what, what the state would have done? Would they have taken money?
They would have jobs, I mean.
Would they have, would they have fired our administration and, and taken the money anyway, if we hadn't paid for the charter?
I don't think they would have helped the street name.
They would have withheld from.
They would have helped the street name.
Right.
No, what they really need is why didn't you do this earlier? You know, you're not supposed to like, you saw.
Did we sue years ago?
Oh, not this issue, no, I mean, it's like, you know, you saw the bottom, outside someone's house, you know, and there was ice there. There may be a particular statute that tells you have to do it within a year, but in general, there's this bill in the law that you can't like, sit on your rights, what, you know.
I thought this.
It surprised the person.
I thought this suit has been going on for three or four years.
Two.
Only two, okay.
So, four years?
Certainly seven, two years, right. Yep, so, that was very interesting, and he said that we would not, likely not expect to get a decision for four to eight months, so. We waited two years to get in court, now we're gonna wait another half a year to potentially get a decision, so it's all kind of fascinating. So let's move on to our committee reports. Michelle, you wanna leave us to your curriculum report?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm trying to keep it really brief, so we'll break. We have the resolution to approve field trip requests. I stated in my report that there are some expenditures there that it's understood that those are like, kind of corroborated or paid back to us retroactively after rooms have underfunded or something. So any of those things that, that kind of pop out at us that might look really expensive, that's nearly guaranteed, right, to come back to us.
I'm going to have a report for the board Monday night, next Monday night, to give you a sense of how many dollars these organizations have actually raised, so you know by the end of the year what we're gonna have.
Okay, thank you. Number three is the resolution to, they hit it's in the reports, far in September and October, that we discussed in the conference session. Number four is the resolution to approve Jesse Strudwick's power progression to attend six hours of hand-on-care training. Number five is a resolution to approve Gen NAP to present dynamic learning MAPS assessment training on Thursday to the following staff members. And just, um, so that you know, dynamic learning MAPS assessment training is for the dynamic learning MAPS assessment that is the standing department for our special needs students. Number six is the resolution to approve the following staff for Genesis grade book training on Monday, number twenty-seven. And those people, I assume, are the turnkey of the.
The Genesis trainers?
The Genesis trainers.
They're turnkeyers, yeah, those are our leaders.
Right, so, um, the middle school apparently is saying, you know, they're, they're updating grade books at this time of year, so looking forward to that for sure. Number seven is the resolution to approve the following graduate student placements, that's Stephen Coco from Rutgers in the Language Arts Department in the middle school. Uh, number eight, resolution to approve the following curriculum in the following subjects, so health, kindergarten, uh, grade one through five. I have the curriculum here, you know, on paper, if anyone wants to take it. Number nine is the resolution to approve the memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials for seventeen, eighteen school year.
There are no changes to the law enforcement L O A, they would talk about that updating it never happens, and approaching it, you don't talk to it. It dates back to twenty thirteen.
Do we have a, is there a copy of the?
Should.
That we could?
Should be out of the draft.
Okay, sorry.
Thanks.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Michelle?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to recommend that everyone look through curriculum on the job for these grades, like, three through five, just to make sure that our discussion about social media was kind of reflected in that, and if not, that maybe any suggestions you could come up with.
And just to be clear, that was our closed session, especially about social media, it was a retained status and discipline, so we'll be off saying, what discussion, social media?
Yeah, right, because you weren't there, so. So, yeah, I just, if, if people could think about that when they're reading the curriculum. Thank you.
Okay, so Mark, can we get your finance report, please?
Yes, the finance committee met at six o'clock tonight. Uh, we discussed the agenda, we also discussed other items, including primarily the current state of the finances for the year. Uh, the, the board, the district has a, a small, a small amount of money above, above the amount budgeted, so we're a little bit ahead of, not as, nearly as much ahead as we were at this time last year. Uh, so we need to be very careful, I would say, so, very careful. And spending the money, we've had a number of additional replacements in the school district of children who need either in district or out of district, I E P placements, which is very expensive. And we've had a number of other expenses that weren't anticipated, including health insurance, which went up for our staff, that's costing us ninety thousand dollars more than the state told us to budget. So we just have to be very careful and just watch every penny and not, not spend too much. We're gonna need it, we're gonna need it going forward into next year. So the agenda itself.
I'm gonna add real quick.
Yes.
That hopefully with the gubernatorial election.
Yes.
And a governor-elect who has promised to fully fund our public schools.
Yes.
We should all, as soon as he is in office, be making phone calls to his office to hold him accountable to that promise. You were elected on that promise, we would like to see our schools fully funded, thank you, sir. That would, in terms of what that would need for our budget going into next year, I, I cannot overstate the, the difference that would make in our budget planning process, and the difference that that would make to the taxpayers of Highland Park. Who wants more? You know, I mean, we could, we could affect real change both for our students and for the taxpayers of Highland Park, were we to be fully funded. We are still underfunded from when Governor Christie took office.
By millions.
We are below where we were funded before he came into office. It's insane amount of funding, yeah. So.
Yeah, so.
We, we, we need to think as a board, and, you know, as a larger community, about how to impress that opinion upon our new governor once he takes office.
Can we, is that wrong to encourage people to make sure that they contact the governor's office so that he knows that?
I don't think so, but he's not governor yet, so we'll wait.
That's true, very good point. So, so we have our bill lists, September, October lists, I'm sure by next Monday we'll have some newer bill lists inside of two. Item three is resolution to approve travel and related expense reimbursement reports. Item four is. Item four is the three-year lease contract for 20 copiers through a shore business, which includes some equipment that they're giving us to sign the contract, but also the prices are coming down, we're getting better equipment, lower prices. This will save a modest amount of money this year and next year and the year after over what we're paying now, so it's really good.
He doesn't like that.
The Highland Park Educational Foundation has given us grants. I totaled it informally and it looks to me like it's over $20,000. It's going to a dozen projects at all of our schools, to projects in different areas. It just looks wonderful. There's projects in cameras and playgrounds and new programs, et cetera. So, it's really, really good. It's on the agenda, it's on the drive, we all have it, and I'm not going to read it all, but there's a dozen really wonderful new programs being funded, so thank you.
And now we have Camp Mason on Camp Burning. What? Says Camp Mason.
Camp Mason Outdoor Adventure, $8,000, fabulous grant.
Well, Camp Mason doesn't have like a whole pretty thing if it brings the grades.
Where's your senior trip? You should go back to Camp Burning.
Item, item six is a resolution approving contractors for professional services. Again, these are the kinds of services that we approve all the time for different types of healthcare, evaluations. The, you have the S Services, which comes in mostly at the high school, I believe, and so on. There's a resolution, number seven, to approve bedside instruction. Resolution to accept a proposal for 22 solar shades at the Middle and High School Media Center. Number nine is a resolution to award the contract, and that's for $3,255 for those, for those shaves. And then item 10 is the removal of a chair, spare chairlift. We have, we have an elevator there, so this chairlift can go. This is the cost of removing it, it hasn't worked apparently in years. And then a resolution to accept the first place award in the amount of $5,000 for the Y R Science or Camelat Needs and Makeover Competition, won by our high school students to be used to purchase supplies for the high school science lab.
Which was small areas.
Yes.
And how many times did I put others for it?
Yes, we all voted for it. So, that's the report. I don't know, if anyone has any questions?
I just have a statement that in response to that, and I told Scott about this, like, my dad worked for 32 years to bring Mr. Myers' quit. We live in the middle of pharmaceutical country. If we have chemistry lab needs and this $5,000 doesn't cover it, I can't imagine that between our all the pharmaceutical companies that surround us, we can't get some of them to say, hey, don't you want the students in the towns that, you know? So, if this $5,000 isn't enough, we need to get, you know, our chemistry department to let us know what those needs are and see if we can get those needs met, because if you're going to be able to do it anywhere, it's going to be here. So, that would be another... And I think there was a, like, I saw a lot of sharing of this video on social media, which was great, but it was also like, well, why have that board been funding that? No, if we don't know that a need exists, it's hard for us to do something about it.
Yeah, that kills me when I see like teachers write all those like GoFundMe accounts, like calculators.
All right.
Oh, I do have one quick question.
I was getting there, geez!
I know, it's good. Is there, do you know the reason why we're going with Camp Mason instead of Camp Burning?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else does.
No, I didn't. I think it wasn't available.
Okay.
Okay, if no one has any other questions for Mark, then we will move on to personnel with Judy. Personnel committee has been... Okay, we've been very busy.
You have been really busy.
Yes, Anne and I and Scott, we've just been meeting and meeting and meeting, interviews and phone calls and more phone calls and more interviews.
And pizza.
And pizza. And salad. So, we interviewed for both the new curriculum supervisor for the humanities and the interim principal at Irving, well, his grade is out on leave. Yes. Miss Freeboard. Yes. And it was a process, it was a real process. We ordered two rounds, the first one with teachers and...
Teachers, supervisors, and myself.
And then the second round involved members of the personnel committee and the principals and, of course...
And Stacey Boudin.
And, yes. And Darcy, thank you for subbing as one of our guest personnel members. But, yeah, so we, we have two candidates, I mean, two resolutions tonight, 13 and 14, I'm going to jump ahead to that. So, 13 is a resolution to approve Rebecca Fittipaldi for the supervisor of curriculum instruction to humanities, and for those of you who do not know Rebecca, I had not met her, she is a teacher at Irving, first grade, and when we were discussing her position, we really realized that the early grades needed a lot of focus, and so that was one of the contributing factors. Scott, do you want to...
We also felt that it was vital to have somebody who was strong with personal skills, you had to be a collaborator and work hard to gain the trust of whatever group of teachers are working at a major grade level that the person coming on board is not acquainted with. And we felt that the internal candidate really was the one who was assured and proven to be a real strong collaborator, so I think that was a big part of our decision-making, too.
Right. So, now we have to find an incredibly awesome first-grade teacher to replace her, which was great, and she's incredibly awesome first grade teacher. Are we going to do the same thing that we did last time? We've got administrator powers, we have them come to the next board meeting?
Yes. So Rebecca will be here next Monday. I didn't invite Megan, but I could if you'd like.
Yeah. So, that only goes to Irving, not her, not really, not her. Okay, so the new maternity replacement principal is another in-house person, Megan McNally from the middle school, and she brought with her a lot of special ed experience, which we need in Irving, in Irving because of the new ADA classrooms and the support of teachers who need over there, and her, to this being so experienced within the district. So, we're both going to start in January, so... And I'll go through the rest of the agenda then. So, number two is just a regular list of sources for teacher status. We have a resignation, Janice Shokowicz, Shokowicz, a personnel hero goalkeeper in the business office, she'll be retiring after January 1st, leaving for last day, December 31st. We have a resignation of Carrie Rockfield, a parent over at Irving, about what she's doing after last day. So, on the agenda, you'll see that we have four new paras at Irving, one is the replacement, and then three are new because of these and with our special ed population. 11 is a resolution to approve one on a parent to work with an extra particular activity with the animated level over at the high school. 17 is hiring of a new elementary teacher at Irving, Helen Tompkins. I don't know if you got that last name.
We'll call her Miss P.
Miss P. Yes. So, looking forward to that. 15, we have approval of a medical leave extension. 16, maternity disability leave, childcare leave. 17, another childcare leave extension. We have some scheduled repositions, you'll see a number 18 for volleyball and track. Some lunch paras, 20 paras, stay with her some paras. Stay with 21. 22, the resolution to approve the poly home instructor, red side tutor, who has listed house and after-school tutoring teachers. 23, staff members for parent night, the yellow parent night paras who work at Harvard. And then 25 is poly staff members to do professional development, kind of, for all in-house people. Okay, to the end, everybody's made. I can't explain anything.
Number 26?
Yeah, you want to do a little break? Yeah.
These are the non-public school funds that are diverted from us, from the federal government to them for certain services. So, we put, I don't know what else, here's the share.
27, oh, okay, so we have some paras that are chaperoning to the competition on Kate on June 4th, and then approval of the before-after-school programs now. Okay, so that's the agenda. Let me give you just one other item we discussed, which was the Irving and Roy Media Specialist position. We focused on whether we have gotten any applicants. We did have two applicants that were feasible, and Scott promised to follow up on that. And just kept encouraging the outside of the office towards approving, and committed to finding those.
One thing I'd tell already is reached out to the coordinator of the media specialist certification program, the Royal College, and we're back for her, Hannah emailed her over the weekend. I'd like to speak with her students who are getting ready for the career and do a recruiting that'll get back as well, so we'll see how that plays out. One thing I'd like to add to your report, Judy, is assurance to the board and the community, parents who might be watching the meeting, that we have dived, if that's a word, past tense, forgot, right into replacing Ms. McNally and Ms. Fittipaldi. We're not trying to be presumptuous and assuming the board's going to approve them next week, but we do need to start the process, so we already have several applicants for Ms. Fittipaldi's position, including two internal applicants. One person is interested in shifting schools and another who works at Irving, who is not in a full-time position, is a returning reposition. So, our focus is on continuity, making sure that they're up in the road, talking about first-grade students in Ms. Fittipaldi's class. And unfortunately, at the middle school level, we'll be looking for a general education teacher with a cert to replace Megan, not a special ed teacher, because the vast majority of her classes are general education, so only teaching one section of special education, which makes it a little easier for us to find good candidates. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Judy and personnel? Okay, we'll move on to policies then with Anne.
Okay, the policy committee has not yet since our last meeting, our last board meeting. We will be meeting, I believe it's on November 28th, to go over some new policies. The policies you see on the agenda are the ones that we just approved for first reading at our last meeting. As far as the ones listed here, A through H policies for second reading, there are no changes to the policies as they were approved for first reading. There is an additional policy that I think got left off of the agenda inadvertently, so it should go beyond next week's voting agenda, and that is policy number 8550, unpaid meal charges slash outstanding food service charges. If you'll recall, we decided to approve the version that we presented with, stress estimate with probably a few edits, we decided to approve that for first reading, but we're going to make, we're going to look into an issue raised by Linda. Linda correctly pointed out that the state of New Jersey, the statute that governs unpaid meal charges requires us to at some point decline to serve lunch to the student whose account is in arrears. You know, that's what the statute says. I looked it up, and of course Linda was correct about that, I just wanted to see for myself. So, what I just reshared the document with board members, and it'll be available to the public at the next meeting, I put that section back in. So, essentially, you know, my payment is not made for lunch. The principal or designated contacts a parent to find, you know, to find out what's going on, tell them to pay. And I just put NJSA, name of the statute, then requires the district to take the following action. After notifying the parent of the arrears, which is the word used by the statute, the district, and then I tried to make clear that this is not our decision, this is the state's decision. So, according to the state, after we notify a parent that their lunch account, the child's lunch account is in arrears, we then provide the parent 10 days to pay the full amount. If the student's parent does not make the full payment within 10 days, the principal or designated shall again contact the parent to provide a second notice that their child's lunch or breakfast bill is in arrears. This is the first mention of breakfast here. If payment in total is not made within one week, the student will not be served breakfast or lunch as applicable without payment, oh, you know what, I take that back, without payment for that day's breakfast. Okay, so if the student, if the student's family can't pay the full amount that they owed for back lunches, the student can still get the next day's lunch, but they'll have to pay for that lunch, the late cash for lunch. So, you know, I'd rather not even deal with that and have the school deal with the parent and do whatever they need to do with the parent and just, you know, let the student continue to eat lunch, but that is what New Jersey requires. And of course, we are hoping very much that we won't get to that point, because when we find somebody who is significantly in arrears, or I guess even insignificantly in arrears, administrators and guidance counselors and schools like, school social workers will be contacting the family and trying to figure out what is going on.
Have we had that situation where we've had to deny food to a child?
I would probably get a call up here regarding if that happened, but I have not yet since I've been here. Do you know about any situations like that?
We're decided a while ago that the meals should be provided. However, the statute has come out in, recently, yes, years ago, that stated otherwise. We have not yet been following it, but we are out of compliance. So, if we were audited regarding this, we would be found to be out of compliance.
I honestly, I think the statute was... I think this, I think the statute was implemented in 2015, there was a 2015 statute, I'm not sure when it became effective, in order to...
Was it part of some other larger bill?
It's not part of a larger bill, but I assume that it was a single act that just has that in it. I understand, what I understand, though, is that it was attempting to make things better for students by requiring that all this notice be given to parents prior to not serving a student lunch, but, you know, they had to include the part about not serving the student lunch.
Because some boards, some boards have, have, have taken the other pack completely.
Right.
You don't pay, you don't get lunch the next day, which is one of your options.
Right. So, this way the person gets up these 17 days, which apparently some districts were not providing. But, you know, they could have done without the don't serve lunch after 17 days.
What would be the penalty for ignoring this, this group, this...
Well, we could end up in a deficit in the cafeteria program, in which case then we're out of compliance with pretty much everything, because we're not allowed to run the program in a deficit. So, I mean, if you maintain this and everybody takes advantage of it, because they just don't feel like, hey, well then we end up in a financial distress situation. If a person is in arrears because they can't afford lunch, they should apply for the application for free or reused price meals, and that's why that program is available, that's why we participated in the national school lunch program, to, you know, to provide that safety net for those... I mean, Judy, could you, Linda, could you maybe give us a sense before the next meeting of how prevalent this is? Like, how many students do we, because now we're just talking about his medical, so, I mean, from our end, we just don't have the information, so... Dr. Taylor and I met with the food service director to go over the reports of all the schools and it's thousands of dollars. Was it that worth it?
It would be worth that. You want us to talk about it, it's too...
Sure. Well, it's confidential in the fact that it's student names. Yeah, we can get stuff that's retroactive, though. We get the student information that's retroactive all the time.
Yeah, we just block it.
I mean, it's probably 20 days long. Well, I mean, can we get a synopsis? There's ex-entire students, ex-entire students, accurate student, I mean, so... Absolutely. I can tell you in each school, how many students, the total amount that is owed, you can come up with an answer.
Is that... Is that since, is that since the beginning of this...
You may overestimate.
This year, or is that in, that goes back?
The numbers carry over. Ten years a year.
So that goes back.
It rolls over.
For how many years does that go back?
Could be, it could be for twelve years if they've been in arrears since kindergarten.
So there might be a family in school that's never ever paid.
It's possible.
And just hypothetically, and if you add all that amount up, whether the kid's still in school or not in school, you know, has left the system or graduated or whatever, you're saying there's many thousands of dollars.
Not for an individual.
Yeah, yeah.
There are individuals that owe over a hundred dollars.
Could you just give us the data, say from last year? Last year, from beginning to the end of the school year, how many students...
We run the balance. The balance is what the balance is.
Perfect. You know, like, as of last year, how many currently enrolled students in the district in the 2016, 2017 school year? How many of those students, you know, were in arrears?
Well, we have a fairly current report, because she ran the report for us when we met.
Cool. And Scott, did you find out for us what methods of contacting families are implemented? Or what is successful, what aren't that kind of...
Certainly if there is someone that hasn't been paying since kindergarten or twelfth grade, it's time to find out what's happening with that family. Because it sounds like there was some kind of distress.
We've had that policy for twelve years, though.
Oh, yeah.
But we, she's saying there's, right, no, right. I don't know what happens with the rest of the...
So here's a little anecdotal story.
We could recover thousands of dollars.
We owe money for lunch, and I think my oldest was in like fourth grade or something. And, you know, we got the cheese sandwich of shame and all of that.
Really?
We also got a bill sent to our house that was for twenty cents or something.
Really? Really? We got a bill every single year for like four dollars and thirty-five cents, even though nobody in my family has ever even bought lunch. Not just paid for it, like, just never bought.
Okay, so two anecdotal, bizarre stories. And my story I thought was funny, because the amount of bill that we owed was less than a stamp. You know, it was really insane. And it came from food services. So I know for sure that we have a surplus for food services, like that's part of our budget. So I would like to know exactly what food services is about when it comes to their balance. You know, what are they doing? I mean, from top to bottom, what is their procedure? How do they let people know? I would like to see the actual letter that is sent from each principal, or, you know, what their phone calls are like, you know, is this... General, how do they approach the problem?
They can't be zeroed those out, though, if we had, just by, I mean, we have funds. We could move for twenty cents or four dollars and thirty-eight, or whatever it was. Moveable.
We are looking into all of those areas. We've already, when we met, we discussed all of those items, and we are putting in a plan of the action as far as looking at the old balances.
Okay.
You're wiping some things out, cleaning it up, so...
Well, like I said, this was from, I don't know how many years ago, six years ago. So things might have changed since then.
So you haven't gotten the forty cent notice every year?
I haven't aligned it to the school.
And I was elected to the school. No, you know what? Because I thought that it was, it was a waste of school funds. For them to spend the money on stamps was wasteful. And if they were going to be wasteful, then I had a problem with respect in the Russia bank bill. I mean, I don't want to figure out how I would get them twenty cents. Anyway, I'd like to know, I'd like to know the details.
All right, so we're gonna get some information on that before we have to vote on this policy next week.
That's great.
Does anybody have any other questions or concerns about that policy or any of them?
Yeah, going back to Mark's question and the data that is gonna get to us. Could you also let us know what the threshold is between when the amount that's in arrears would go to the point where it's gonna push us to be out of compliance with other parts of the budget? You know, like, if, knowing that our cafeteria program is not a zeroed-in program, then there's actually, I hesitate to call it a profit there, but there's actually a little bit more money there than what is extended. If you could allude in your report to us at one point, the amount that's in arrears would exceed and put that program into the negative.
Well, at this point, if you look at the audit report, you'll see that that is not an imminent threat.
Okay.
Okay? But we do have a lot of equipment that is over ten thousand dollars that we will be looking at having to replace. This is getting very old. And if you look at the bill lists for cafeteria, you'll see a lot of repairs, walk-in freezers and things like that, that we're probably looking at having to replace them within the next year or two. So that's why we don't mind having money in reserve, retained, it's called retained earnings because it's an enterprise account.
Okay.
So that money needs to be used for those major expenses that do come.
Thank you.
All right, so we will all look forward to getting that information sometime this week before we vote on this for second meeting next week. Did anybody have any other questions or concerns about any other policies? Nope. All right. We don't have Shree's here for Equity and Excellence, and I didn't speak to her today. She let me know that she was gonna be out making tonight and said that Equity and Excellence has a head on, so I don't think there's anything to report there. We don't have anybody here for public comment, so we'll skip that. Old business, I can get through really quickly. I don't know if anybody got a chance to look at the two resolutions that are on the drive pertaining to the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate Assembly, but it's Saturday. You all know we're all be on Saturday. They're kind of new rangers, actually. Middletown is, Middletown was one of the towns that got funding taken away from them when the legislature redistributed funds, where we got, we got extra money, but other districts lost money. So, you know, our gain was someone else's loss. So they're saying, please don't do that again. Can we please say that the New Jersey School Boards Association would like to tell the state legislature that if you give us budget numbers and we create a budget, that then you don't take some of that money away from us? I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to ask. So even the school board said, you know, that they could support that. So does anybody have any...
I'm glad to hear that.
Does anybody have any concerns or questions with us or supporting that resolution?
That's a bold position by school board.
I know. Thanks for asking.
And that's not the Middletown one, right?
That is the Middletown one.
The Middletown, is that the one that is proposing a two percent cap on... I'm getting it too confused.
Bloomfield is the one about special education.
Okay. I have no problem with the one from Middletown.
Okay, yes. And then Bloomfield is basically saying that their special ed costs are out of control, they're twenty-two percent of their budget, nearly twenty-two percent of their budget. And one of the things they're asking for is a two percent cap on the, on the amount that private schools can raise their tuition. They basically subject them to the same cap, cap that we're being, that we're being subjected to. So the language, the language that the New Jersey School Boards Association is recommending be adopted is that the NJSA believes special education providers should have the same cap on their ability to charge local districts for services that local districts have on their ability to raise revenue. I like it.
I don't like that one. Because honestly, like, if those schools are dealing with students with special needs and for whatever reason to provide adequate services to those students, encourage for them a four percent increase, I think we should be entitled to raise our costs by four percent, rather than them trying to limit the services that they're providing to those students.
I like Rob's. You should go raise our taxes more.
Yeah.
Maybe have a limit there.
That's true.
I'm concerned that it's constraining the services that are provided to those students that are sent to those schools.
And honestly, that's the same argument that I heard, I talked to, we had, remember we had a meeting, we had, when we had a meeting with some of Senator Biden's staff and Karen Bincheck's staff and Izzy Pinkett's staff? That was, that was their argument. That this is a difficult way to rate the costs, because some of the equipment say that special education schools' needs are everywhere. But you can make that argument about us as well, so, I don't know. It's intriguing. When people like, other than it's like you're...
No, I just think it's, the Rob's interpretation is less eye for an eye.
Yeah.
You know, it's unnecessarily punitive. It's just kind of like, well, we have to do a study. Like, this lady, this voice, and it sounds very mature.
A lot of the rest of it, I like a lot in terms of how, talking about how money isn't necessarily for the students until the following year, where if you have a student placed in your district during the school year, that increases your cost. You can't increase your costs until the following school year. There's, you know, there's a lot of other things in here that I really like. But the two percent cap, I've always found troublesome, even just for us. You know, it's like where our costs are building up to provide adequate services to our students, and it's costing us more than two percent. We're constrained, except for certain special situations where we can go above that two percent. I've never agreed with it for us, and I don't think I'd agree with it for any oshel.
Well, so here's what NJSA did with this. Here's what Bloomfield, and this is what they've done with us multiple times, too. We say we want this language, and the school board goes, eh, you can have this language. And they kind of twisted a little bit. So what Bloomfield asked for was the NJSA believes that the state should fully fund special education costs, including extraordinary aid costs and transportation costs, and limit the increase that all providers can charge to the same two percent cap. So if the state were paying for it, then, okay, you know, like, I mean, what Bloomfield was trying to get at was, you're holding us to this, you're letting them raise it to this, and you're not paying for hardly any of it. But NJSA reduced it down to this. My sense is, knowing folks on Bloomfield or at that, that they're not gonna like that language any better than we do. And this can get amended. I mean, it's kind of the cool thing about the delegate assembly, is somebody can just get up and say, I want this language taken out, I want this language put in, and then if you can get enough people to agree with you. So my sense is that this will get played with. So I think I get the sense of what you guys are saying, is, you know, we don't want this to be an eye for an eye kind of thing, you know? We're stuck with two percent, so you can only have two percent. But could everybody agree with what their original statement was of like, hey, state, help us out here, our costs are out of control, you're letting them raise their costs as much as they want to, but you're limiting us to our two percent. Something's gotta go there somewhere.
Right.
So, because that, that's the original intent of what I had in the Bloomfield resolution, and just NJSA kind of did a very reductionist kind of read on it.
Why isn't NJSA allowed to do that? I mean, because Bloomfield's resolution can't...
Because they, it goes through a committee. So the times that we've put a resolution before the New Jersey School Boards Association, I then have to present our resolution to this subcommittee of the delegate assembly that then says either, yes, we'll put your resolution forward, or no, we won't put your resolution forward, or yes, we'll put your resolution forward, but we'll do it with this revised, this revised language. You don't just get to submit it and then it goes to all the school board. It gets fumbled through this committee.
That's interesting. I don't like that.
Yeah, I think the thing is that there would be a lot of school districts and voters who would not support having to pay what we would call state, some additional tax to fund what we're talking about. You know, they would say, no, if they want to have additional special education, they should have to pay for it. I'm not, I just feel there are places that...
I'm sure there's a...
Right. Don't think of it the same way as we do.
Right. Whole countries, for example. Okay, so, all right, I feel like I have a good sense of where you guys are, and we'll try to represent your views accordingly at the delegate assembly on Saturday. We don't have anything else for old business. Does anybody have anything for new business?
Would like stairs?
No. We don't have anybody here for public comment, so can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?